And welcome and happy new year. Welcome to the January 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Gathersburg Planning Commission. Happy new year. First up is the approval of our minutes from November 20th, 2018. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of November 20th, 2018 as we're in the record.
Second?
Moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. I want to mention that alternate Commissioner Phil Wessel is joining us on the dais and participating this evening, as not all regular commissioners are present. Thanks, Phil, for being here.
Sure thing.
Next up on our published agenda is record plats. Do we have anything?
We have no plats.
None tonight? Okay. And that takes us to our consent agenda, and there's one item for AFP-8099-2018, Montgomery County Agricultural Center, replacement of two barns at 16 Chestnut Street in the MXD mixed-use development zone. And this is an amendment to final site plan. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Straightforward.
No.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. All right. Next up is recommendations to the Mayor City Council, and there is, I believe, one of those tonight, for SDP-7927-2018, 700 Quince Orchard Road, construction of a parking facility, two new streets, and other site improvements in the MXD mixed-use development zone. Again, this is a recommendation to Mayor and City Council, and presented from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening and happy new year.
Good evening. Happy new year to you too. So this is a planning recommendation for schematic development plan application, SDP-7927-2018. The subject property is located at 700 Quince Orchard Road in the zone MXD. The applicant filed a SDP application by requesting approval for the construction of new parking facilities, two new streets, and other site improvements. The application also included a road pro waiver and a true removal variance, which discussed at the last planning commission recommendation meeting on October 17th, 2018. The application was originally scheduled to go before the Mayor City Council for apology discussion on November 19th. The applicant had submitted a letter requesting that the council and the planning commission to reopen their records, to allow them time to modify the plans to include initial phase of the project. So on November 20th, 2018, the Mayor, the planning commission announced by a motion the closing of the record on December 20th, 2018. And the Mayor City Council's record for this application will close on January 4th of 2019 with apology discussion anticipated for January 22nd of 2019. There are currently 74 exhibits in the records, and the revised plans that we'll be discussing tonight are exhibit 68 to 73 in the record. Just to remind the planning commission, when the applicant came before them, they had proposed to construct a two-level parking deck south of the building adjacent to Quince Orchard Road. So the applicant has revised the plans to include initial phase, which is the surface lot. And according to their justification letter, due to the cost of a construction deck, they would need, they couldn't do the construction at this stage. So they revised the plans to include a surface lot, which is the first phase. The parking deck will still be part of this SDP application. It'll just be there, just, you know, in the future. When they can, they'll build the parking deck in the future. And they would just need to submit a final site plan for that. The applicant has regraded this section of the property to allow for the surface lot to function. So here is a 3D rendering of what the surface lot will look like from Quince Orchard Road. I do want to note that the signage that you see in the rendering is just for illustrative purposes. They will come back with final signage at final site plan. The plan includes some landscaping and some trees that is proposed to be in the public right-of-way. They did receive preliminary approval from the state highway administration to allow them to regrade and plant some landscape in the right-of-way. And they also selected trees to make sure they don't conflict with the existing overhanging wires that's currently there. So the surface lot, here's another view of the surface lot. So the surface lot will contain 202 parking spaces. And the lot will connect to the ground floor park facility that was converted, that converted the existing first-floor office building. As you see with the last parking garage, or the parking deck, there were entrances here and here. But right now, with the surface lot, they closed this entrance and opened, or kept this parking garage open. And with closing this entrance, the applicant was able to gain a couple of parking spaces within this park facility, which is 105 parking spaces. And for the office use, the applicant is required to provide 450 spaces in accordance with the city code, which is the one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. But pursuant to Section 24-160D-8A of the city code, the city council has the authority to determine the appropriate number of spaces at SDP review. And the planning commission determines the final number of parking spaces at final site plan review. In the applicant's justification letter, they stated that the 307 space provided is adequate to meet the needs for any future tenants that's going to go in this building. And the applicant also identified that there are going to be 33 additional parking on Public Street A for any visitors or employees for that office building. We, the applicant is also going to need request of parking waiver from the planning commission at final site plan to accommodate a one-way 36-foot parking module, which is this parking module here. Staff realized that they're short two feet because in the city code, for a single loaded drive-by with parking on one side, the applicant can reduce the drive-by by 17 feet. So the applicant will be short by two feet. And the applicant is also short with their internal green, parking lot green space requirement. The, they are required to buy 10% for their own providing 7.5% green space within the parking lot. But, you know, staff is supportive of the waivers, and we reviewed the vehicle turning circulation plan, and we found that there's adequate turning circulation within the surface lot for that to work. Staff is supportive of the proposed modifications to the previously reviewed SDP plan. They proposed plan of real retrofit an existing and outdated, underutilized office building to facilitate new tenants, which will enhance the property and bring new business to the city. Now, this renovation is the first stage of an overall redevelopment plan. You know, the sketch plan also approved some residential development up north. So this office building will connect to future residential development. While staff is supportive of the proposed plans, staff has some concerns about adequate vehicle turnaround within the parking garage. So if you can see here, when they closed off that entrance, they gained four parking spaces here. Staff has concerns when someone drives through this aisle and finds that someone's parked there, they're going to have like a difficulty to make a three-point turn out of that dead end. But, but at this stage, it's not a major flaw in this SDP application, and we felt the applicant still move forward with apology discussion, and we can work with the applicant at final site plan stage to work that out. Lastly, staff has included additional conditions to this SDP approval, and those conditions were prepared to address some dedication construction of the future streets. I didn't, I did send the commission an email today about condition number five. We talked with the applicant about condition number five. There was a little confusion on what they meant by that condition. So we just made some minor modifications to clarify what staff is looking for, that condition. So I do want to read that condition. So the condition reads, prior to the release of bonds that relate to a street, any proposed public streets must provide a continuous public rights-of-way connection, both through the development and with existing public streets, and must be plotted and dedicated, accepted by the city in conformance with the approved and associated site plan, or, sorry, and associated sketch plan. And I am able to answer your few questions. We also have the development team here to answer any questions we have this evening.
And again, the record is closed, so we're really just in discussion at this point. Can you clarify, because this is part of an MXD, ultimately, MXD development under the SDP process, the parking calculation is exclusive to the field of parking being proposed now and the office building, as opposed to blending it with any of the surrounding parking that might be available later? Is that right?
Yep. So the parking that's part of this plan is just for this office.
But as a practical matter, and as this sort of discussion or question, is there, is there opportunities to park elsewhere on the site?
Um...
I mean, now there is because there's a large field of parking there that's not yet developed. But in the, in the final build-out, there would be commercial kind of to the northeast, or no, north, may have my north there wrong here, but up and right based on this plan. Is that right?
So, the sketch plan approved for this section to be mostly residential.
Okay.
And then over here, commercial. So they're planning to have this mostly just residential on this side of the property.
Okay. And then back, back to the plan for the parking, the 307 calculation is a conventional space per square foot for office in a, in a comparable zone? Is that right?
Yes. In their justification letter, they also mentioned that they're planning on including lab space. On, they're converting that third level for lab space, which should be used with the existing office building. So the parking demand for lab space is less than for a regular office building.
So is that already accounted in the 307, or is that just a way to justify that it's less than what was required?
Yes. The three, same, do you think?
Well, let me put it a different way. If you were to do the straight calculation right now, is that the 450?
Yeah.
That would be 450 based on the total square foot into the office. Okay.
Office and lab space.
But based on diluting it by having some lab space, the applicant feels 307 is the right number, is the right amount of square, whether you calculate it on square foot or just calculate it on spaces? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Got to follow up a question to that. So, since we're saying, and the applicant is saying that, you know, all of the parking required as of now is fulfilled on that, on the surface, on that particular site, we're not relying on parking from other areas of the larger property. What is the, what's the plan as far as phasing goes? Because at some point, when you go to construct the garage, you are going to, in essence, eliminate a large portion of that parking for months during construction. So this may or may not be a purview of our decision here, but we're setting up a situation where, in order to build the garage, we're already below the requirements for parking now. In order to build the garage, you're going to essentially displace, for the period of construction, half to three-quarters of the parking spaces that are going to have to go somewhere else if you have an occupied building. So it's a, it may be more of a question for the applicant as sort of, what, what is the, the long-term plan? And is it actually feasible to build the parking garage while the building's occupied at some point in the future?
I don't believe we have an answer for that.
Okay.
The, the applicant has assured us that this phasing plan will work. So we will assume that they will have some sort of temporary parking if they choose to enact the second phase.
And I guess it's more of a question for, for the city and for staff, that if at some point in the future, they come forward with a permit request, a building permit application to build the garage, review of available parking and the impacts of construction on available parking, I guess, would be part of the, the permit review at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the site plan.
Site plan. Yeah, it would require a site plan amendment to build the second phase. I figured, I think we could probably review the impact on the temporary parking at that time. And it would go, would come before the planning commission.
Okay, okay. Other questions?
Not at this point.
No?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
I'll hold off.
Well, we're in, in sort of discussion and question right now. We're not, we're not, the record's closed, so if you have a question or concern.
I'm concerned with the, the number of cars that are going to be parked in front of this building between Quince Orchard Road and the front entrance. It's, it's very intense. Initially, when we talked about the garage being there, the multi-level garage, it was going to be below part of the surface. In fact, it wouldn't even be visible for the most part from Quince Orchard Road, as I recall. Now, we're going to have this mecanum put down, and it's going to be a lot of cars all in front of this building. And I'm concerned, I realize that there's, there isn't adequate parking now behind the building, because there will be construction eventually for townhouses. And I, I just, aesthetically, as well as practicality, for practical reasons, I think it may be a bit of a, trying to squeeze a, squeeze a lot into a small space. I realize that you've got 307 spaces that you've planned out here. Again, deliveries, how would deliveries be getting through this maze of cars? And where would the, is there a loading dock on the side, on the right side?
So they currently have a loading dock on this side. So the trucks will come through and make deliveries over here. So they won't go through this.
They won't go through the maze of cars in the front.
Yeah.
Jasmine, just for comparison, do you have the satellite image that shows the adjacent, adjacent south or west, I guess, would be the most comparable?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so the extent of the parking field in front of the building to the, well, south in the picture, where does that align relative to what the proposed, proposed parking field is for this building?
Sorry, repeat that again?
The, the building immediately adjacent, so they're to the other side of the main drive aisle, main entrance off of Quince Orchard. I'm not sure who's there now. I can, I don't remember the tenant. But in this picture, it'd be just, just south of, of the property we're talking about.
Agreed.
Uh, right there. That parking field adjacent to Quince Orchard is, how does that align with where the proposed parking is for that? Is it farther away from Quince Orchard? Is it about the same as what's being proposed? Is it closer?
It's, it's about the same.
About the same.
So just by way of comparison and compatibility, or, you know, consistency, if, if you imagine the tree line that's established in front of that building, that's what's being proposed here. Is that right?
Yeah. Something like all the parking could be right over here.
Yeah, but that, that building's set back further, though. Just slightly, but it is set back further. The one you're talking about.
No, I understand that.
It's probably about one, one bay of cars.
So if you were to zoom in on, on that just a little bit, and this is really just for illustrative purposes, just to get a sense of scale and all. Granted, there's a huge green setback right now, which is really great for this, this building. But you can see the parking field right, right below where the, where the boundary is for this building, in the adjacent building. And you can see how close it is to Quince Orchard. Is that about where this parking field would align? Or how far would it be set back? Do you have, do you have a sense?
15 feet. It's very close to the red line. The edge of the parking lot is close to the red line.
So it's going to really come out farther than the one adjacent to it?
Yes.
15 feet. Okay.
Sure.
Just to give you a sense of what's going on here.
So if I could address that for just a moment?
Yeah.
Because obviously, when this first came to us, staff had the exact same concern that you do, Commissioner Hoffman, Kaufman. But, you know, in the scope of things, we're kind of looking at the greater good here, because the rehabilitation of this building and the recycling of an existing asset within the city, you know, we're trying to make it work. And, you know, obviously, the residential is already approved in terms of the sketch plan behind it. And so there's not a whole lot of leeway in terms of where the parking can go. And without the deck, this seems to be the best solution.
Okay. Thanks, John. I'll, I'll make an argument, excuse me, argument sort of long-term for pulling that parking to a surface lot in front of, you know, from my perspective, kind of behind the building. I know it's along a major highway, but eventually, we get Street A and has residential on the other side. For me, that becomes the front door at some point.
Right.
And, you know, they're sort of architecturalizing it that way as well. The main lobby's on that side, the three, three-bay, you know, awnings are on that side. I think that pulling that parking to the backside, a very efficient, like, you know, you're saying there's a warrant of cars back there, is a great way to sort of store office cars. And frankly, I'm kind of hoping in the, in the future that the, the office becomes, you know, so productive and efficient that they don't need that deck. Then we end up leaving that surface parking back there, and it has a nice front door with a Street A and a residential building. I mean, that's, excuse me. So from, you know, from my perspective, I think it's, I think it's a great call, and it may end up being a permanent condition. And I don't, you know, as long as we got that 10 to 15 feet of green, there should be plenty of buffer for a parking lot, in my mind. But, you know, if it were a residential street, if it were a pedestrian street, you know, it's a hike or bike trail. But if it was sort of a casual pedestrian street, I'd have a little more heartburn about it. Frankly, I'd have heartburn just at the building being so far away, but.
Well, my other concern is the fact that there's no island separating the, the lot as you go through the lot. In other words, these cars are backing up face-to-face, basically. There's no island. Whereas in the other property next door, I believe there is an island that separates the parking area as you go through. So again, this is a real tight squeeze to put a lot of cars in. And again, I, I have, I have some concerns about it. I just, but I accept what you're saying, John.
Yeah. I think green area is what gives me the heartburn, to some extent, to say, look, you know, I, I understand grabbing those extra, you know, four or eight cars in order to, and have a dead end in your garage, you know, for an office building. I think that's fine. You know, people learn, learn where they park, they learn how to deal with that stuff pretty quickly. But it's the green area in the middle of the lot. So it's a contiguous sort of span of asphalt that gives me a little bit of heartburn. So you're not having a couple islands in there with a little bit of tree covered in order, you know, cover some of that asphalt with, with some shade or, and/or, you know, a little bit of visual breakup is, would be my heartburn, not the distance or, or the amount of asphalt between the, the Currie, Quince Orchard and the building. And it's, it's the...
Chemick suggestion, has there been any discussion about possible solar panels over these, over these spaces to utilize more efficiently what you've got there? I mean, just to, just throwing it out there. Has the applicant discussed that at all, or any consideration for that?
No. I mean, we haven't heard that.
Okay. Just throw that out there for the record.
All right.
So, my, my one other question is, from a sort of use standpoint, and I'm not sure this has any bearing at all on whether I'm opposed to or in favor of this, but, you know, if we've got a sufficient parking, if we decide there's sufficient parking to serve the building on the street now, what, what is driving the need for structured parking in the future? Because where it's located, it's not really going to serve any of the other, you know, functionally serve any of the other development and other places on the site. So I just, from my perspective, I want to understand, we have a phased plan in front of us, but is it a phased plan that's likely to ever actually be realized? Or at this point, is it just a backpocket option if at some time it may, may be needed? I mean, it's sort of a question.
Yeah. I mean, to go along with it, the assumption is that there's a percentage of the gross area that's dedicated to lab space. So theoretically, a tenant could come in and not need all the lab space and want to convert that to office, which would then put more pressure on parking. Or it could go the other way, and more of the space could be dedicated to open, to lab space or lower-intensity occupancy loads, right? And, which would put less emphasis on the parking. So right now, it's an assumption based on, I guess, a hypothetical tenant or a hypothetical mix of tenants. And...
And as John said, there'll be some synergy with the residential across the street. So there'll be some kind of larger master plan to parking ratio. But we just don't know what it is.
Yeah. And I just, from, from my perspective, I think, and for the public's sake, I think a lot of people see phased plans and assume, okay, we're going to get step A now, and in five years, we're going to get step B. In reality, we're getting phase one now, and phase B, maybe if the need drives it, but maybe not.
Yeah. I would phrase it as, we, we have a, we, we were given a design that could incorporate additional parking, should it become necessary. And so now we have an inkling of what could happen, which is good to have now.
Better, better phrasing than me.
Yeah.
And is the...
It depends on the tenant, you know?
Yep. Well, that's my point. And I, this is a recommendation to the council on an SDP amendment, right? So does it drive any kind of numbers in the SDP itself? Or is it still the original sketch plan numbers of being X number of square feet office, which may be lab, but we don't distinguish in the SDP or the sketch plan? Is it...
That's correct.
You know, so we're, we're making it...
We're, we're just stating the square footage of the building and establishing a parking ratio at one per 450, or that's what's been asked, and we're recommending approval of that.
Right.
I have a good question. Jasmine, can we go back to when you were talking about the, the inability to turn around? You, now you said that's going to be a temporary situation?
Um...
I wasn't clear. I wanted you to get through your whole presentation before I asked that question, but...
So, um...
Because there's so...
Staff...
Right.
So staff has talked to the applicant, having them crossing out those spaces to give someone who's driving in, realize something they can turn around.
Right. Because that can be a pretty dangerous situation.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, and sorry, Danny, I'm going to interject, but I don't think it's dangerous, but it's a total pain in the rear end, right? So it's, it's really just inefficient, you know? So...
Okay.
Because it's an office garage, there aren't, is not open to the public in the same way that like a shopping mall would be, or some, you know, medical office or something. So everybody's there, probably parks in that same space every day, or at least is very familiar with how that garage lays out. And there's two dead-end aisles that they're going to have to go down. And if there isn't a spot, or somebody parks in their assigned spot, or something goes wrong, they're going to have to do a three-point turn to get around and go back out. So those, you know, those two unlikely and not very often conditions will happen. And, but that person will know. You know, it's not, you know, it's not like the main thoroughfare in front of a retail store, which would be a real concern. That would actually be dangerous.
Okay. And I'm looking at it like, you know, I'm not looking at it as, you know, I mean, you presented something I didn't really...
It, it depends on the tenant. If, if they do go with some sort of medical office, you know, we'll revisit that at, at the final site plan.
Well, we could put a condition on to say that those spaces cannot be used by the public. You know, they have to be by tenants of the building, right?
Yeah. I would feel...
Well, we'd have to sign it so that people wouldn't go back there.
Right. I'd feel comfortable with that.
Wouldn't cross our fingers. We'd sign it.
I don't know. My, the garage I park in in my office every day has this exact condition. And more than once, I've been trapped at the dead end and had to back my way up. And it's not, it's, it's, it's a pain in the rear, but it's not the end of the world. So it doesn't, doesn't concern me that much.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns, questions? Well, I, I think staff has teed up what is the core issue, which is, we have an existing condition, an existing building, that there's an opportunity to recycle and rehabilitate and repurpose in a way that's, I think, beneficial to the, to the city, with, with the shortcoming of how it'll be parked. And that's, that's the compromise we might need to make to, to make the project move forward. What, what's the trigger for phase two, for, for a parking deck that might put some relief on this? Is that, is that a tenant demand? Is that a, is that a, what do you...
I feel like that's more of a tenant demand. If a tenant comes in and they need more parking space, then, then they may need to come back to, to staff.
But we don't have it in there as a, a threshold in terms of leased space or occupied space with a certain use or anything like that. That would be entirely market-driven or landlord-driven.
And it would be a new site plan, right? So...
Yeah. So if this SDP gets approved, and they go forward with the surface lot, submit a site plan for it, say in the future down the line, they need a parking garage, then they'll come back for final site plan for the garage. So it won't go straight to permit.
Let me ask you a different kind of question. If 307 is the right number, how do we know 303 is not okay too, or 300? And the reason I say that, just, just to be clear, is I do think there's this issue of a large field of asphalt that could be, might be better as a, as a, at least for the moment, a front elevation to Quince Orchard with a bit more of a landscaping aisle treatment. Even if it's not 10%, fully relieved, but just something that breaks it up visually. So I'm just...
That's, that, that number is really based on things that we've used over at Metamune and other biotech offices that we've worked with.
But I mean, in terms of percentages, if it was a couple of spaces less in an effort to get something to break up that long expanse of, long double-row parking with no brake at all, is that, is that a major step in it, or is that...
I, that's more the applicant's to answer than staff.
I mean, I, I guess, what can we do on the, with the record closed, how much?
The way the code is actually written is the plant, the council at the SDP stage essentially sets the groundwork for the parking demand, and it gets established by planning of a final site plan. So if the number is actually reduced slightly, that can be approved by planning commission at the final site.
At site plan. What, what about space size? Are they drawn, or are they calculated at our regular size, or have they been...
They're a mixture of eight-and-a-half wide spaces and nine-foot spaces.
So some of them are compact already?
Yeah. The code does allow eight-and-a-half foot wide spaces for low turnover.
Yeah, employment.
Employee spaces. And we've done it for other office buildings in the city. They did keep the visitor spaces at the front of the building, nine-foot wide spaces, though, since those are intended to be more high-turnover spaces.
Okay. Is there any consideration for electric cars, for charging stations?
They, they will.
Yeah. Not the SDP stage. It's something I could look into with them at the final site plan stage. Yeah, not the SDP stage. It's something I could look into with them at the final site plan stage.
Okay.
Other concerns, what? You, you raised a, you triggered something in my, in my mind when you were making your point there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding here is the parking waiver for a number of parking spaces, that is or is not a part of what we're recommending tonight?
So there, um, so the parking waiver that I mentioned, that's going to be reviewed at final site plan is for the drive out module.
Okay.
And the internal green block.
So part of our approval tonight is approving the use of four fifty, or one, one space per four hundred and fifty square feet, or is that a by right?
Well, I mean, it's all, it's all part of the site plan.
Yeah, I guess, here, well, here's what I'm getting at, is we've been talking about the trigger for the garage as being a, you know, change in tenant use. Or, you know, less, more office, less lab. But those percentages of areas aren't part of what we're approving tonight. We're saying, this is in the M X D zone, one space per four hundred and fifty square feet, done. So, as part of that approval, there is no trigger from a permitting standpoint to require additional spaces. It's purely the applicant coming back and saying, you know, I've got this tenant who wants more space.
Right.
We've been talking about it as if, oh, well, if the square, if the mix of lab to office changes, that'll trigger a new review, but that's not correct. Because we're approving a plan that says regardless of use, if it's a use permitted in the M X D zone, approved at one per four fifty.
Yes, they could come in and replace the interior of that use with a different office use that's denser and be underparked. But if they wanted to build a garage, they have to come back to us.
I just, I just.
That's a good point. That's, that's the risk, that's the debate, yeah. For me, you know, I'm a, I'm a less asphalt guy, so, just in general. But it's, uh, and so I, you know, I'd rather put the burden on us as a city to enforce some of those things. So if we get, you know, parking in a neighbor's property, it's, it's uncomfortable, no good, you know, nobody wants it. But I'd rather have that enforcement, you know, on, on the staff's sort of responsibility than I would a bunch of empty spaces sitting around collecting heat, so.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, less parking is good, but, uh, just to make sure we're all clear on what we're talking about.
Absolutely, yeah. So in my mind, I don't know if it helps mayor and council or, or the planning commission's future approval for us to give a range that's, you know, a little bit lower to give the, give the applicant, uh, space to take out a couple spaces.
Put a tree or two in.
Yeah, put a tree or two in, yeah. So certainly don't want, uh, I don't, I don't know that it is, but I certainly wouldn't want the sort of legislative excuse to say, I can't put a couple more trees in because the SDP says, you know, ten cars. When I, you know, I could do eight now. I feel like I'm comfortable doing eight, getting in a couple trees, but I'm locked into my SDP approval. Is that, was that the condition we'd be approving, or can we approve some, do we need to approve something different in order to give flexibility to the applicant and staff to add a couple trees?
I, I think the code already offers the flexibility. Again, the council only sets the approximate number of spaces of the SDP. The final number is, is approved by the planning commission of final site plan. So we can work with the applicant when they come in with final site plan to ensure that they meet the green space requirements in the parking lot, and maybe add a couple additional trees on top of that.
Yeah.
And I think they'll need it even for lighting standards too, you know, to, to put in light poles and stuff like that, so.
So the final number may come back to the planning commission, final site plan may be lower than three oh seven in the current plan now.
Okay, okay. But, yeah, that makes me feel good, and, and your discussions on the record from all of us to say that, you know, a little more green and, and a, you know, code, meeting code, site plan. But, you know, in my, speaking for myself, you know, there may be some room in that final site plan to reduce that green area calculations from the, you know, code standard, given the unique conditions of the site, but, um, more than sort of what we're demonstrating right now, if that makes sense, from, from me.
Okay. When the parking calculation is done for final site plan, what's it going to be? It's going to be one per four hundred and fifty square feet with a waiver, or one per four hundred and fifty square feet straight up?
We'll have to see. I think that it will work with the applicant.
Okay.
And, I mean, they have the parameters of one to five, to four fifty.
And that's comparable to other tech, tech facilities in the city? So we have some sense of what that means in terms of distribution of office versus lab space and how many people are bringing cars and all that to the site, okay? But that's what the number three oh seven's based on now.
That's correct.
All right. So if it slides a few spaces one way or the other for, or if more, more spaces become the compact, um, that may be part of that, that equation as well, or?
Yeah, it would be tough to, to do that the way that the sites lay down.
With angled parking, okay.
All the angled parking is the eight and a half.
It is, okay. Plus there's the parallel to the drive out, so it's, it's all packed in there pretty tight. Okay. What else? Anything else? Comfortable moving forward?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I think, I think where we're at, if I'm not mistaken, by paraphrases, we've got a pretty solid, uh, recommendation, I'm ready to move forward with, um, with some direction in the, in the record about softening the paved area, but with landscaping or parking spots, parking spaces or whatever. But overall, the recommendation's before because we see the value in rehabilitating and, and pulling this, pulling back into viable use in the city, right?
Just like Director Schlippings said, very good.
All right, very good. Um, so we have, Jasmine, just to recap, we're, we're making a motion on some, some. Two recommend, or excuse me, a recommendation with seven conditions, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, recommend approval of S D P dash seventy-nine, twenty-seven, dash, seven eighteen and associated road code waiver and tree variance to mayor and city council with seven conditions.
Okay. Any, any concerns, ads?
Just, just one quick question. When you talk to, when you talk to the applicant about number five, they were, okay, right? Everything's good?
Yeah.
Good.
How does our discussion about landscaping and some of those, those nuances make it to the mayor and council? Is that in the memo, the narrative of the memo? Okay. All right.
Yeah. Good discussion.
No other points you want to add? Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record, the findings of the final staff analysis, recommend approval of S D P seven-nine-two-seven, seven, dash, twenty-eighteen and associated road code waiver and tree variance to the mayor and city council with the seven conditions as noted in the record.
Second.
So we can second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good discussion. Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you.
Uh, that takes us to our site plan agenda tonight. The first up is A F P dash seven-eight-two-five, dash, twenty-eighteen. Medimune Sports Complex located at five oh one Orchard Ridge Drive in the M X D mixed use development zone. This is an amendment to final site plan presented from staff as Caroline Sidon. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Uh, staff is before you tonight to introduce application A F P seven-eight-two-five, twenty-eighteen. The applicant is requesting approval of an amendment to final site plan to add an outdoor sports complex to the parcel. Currently operating the Discovery Meadows Childcare Center, which is part of the Medimune AstraZeneca Campus at five oh one Orchard Ridge Drive, which is the, uh, the daycare center is shown here in yellow and the sports complex in, in blue. And this is all along Orchard Ridge Drive to the north of the site, Quince Orchard Park, and the Vista's developments are to the north and east, and then the main Medimune, uh, campus to the west. Uh, the sports complex includes a soccer field, a tennis and basketball court, volleyball court, and a walking trail, along with a one thousand square foot restroom and a storage building. Subject property is owned, uh, M X D, its use development, and, and as I said, is located at five oh one Orchard Ridge Drive. And, uh, you may recall, I guess about a month ago, Jasmine actually did our first drone video, uh, as part of the site plan, so I now have the second one.
Excellent.
I believe, uh, it, it's, it's going to go, I want to play it in a minute. It's going to go in two directions, so you, it'll fly over the site. I think first it goes from west to east, so you will see the sports, uh, field and then the daycare center, and then it'll go the other direction. So hopefully, I can get this going.
Cool.
Make it bigger. Yeah, so here's, uh, and you can see on the field right now, this is kind of leftover fencing from a stream restoration project that was going on back here. Uh, so that will be removed and, um, soccer field will be here. And then coming up into view is the daycare center. They will share an entrance, uh, which is already constructed. And, um, I should mention as part of this, there is also a twelve space parking waiver request to share this parking lot that already exists. So now it's going back from, uh, east to west across the field. And I think at the very end, you'll be able to see the proximity of the field to the main Medimune campus. So you can see what a short distance it actually is. This is one of Medimune's buildings coming up here in the far right, and then their main, there's a parking garage. And their main, it might, it might cut off before it actually gets to the main campus.
Okay, great. That's great.
And we can pull that up if the, if the need arises. Eric Morrison is here. I will, uh, introduce him, and he will have, um, must have a few things to say, and then we can go from there.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, so on behalf of Medimune, I'd like to thank the planning commission for inviting us here to present the Medimune Sports Complex and consider the, uh, the amendment to the final site plan. Uh, my name's Eric Morrison. I'm the director of site master planning for Medimune, and I'm going to be presenting, uh, the business purpose for the project and the site development strategy. Joining me is my colleague, Greg Brenner from W B Engineers in Rockville. He's the project architect for the project, and he's going to be getting into the details of the project design. So, one of Medimune's strategic priorities is to provide our employees with a great place to work. Uh, the initiative strives to make the staff aware of resources in our community, as well as provide onsite amenities, uh, to give them a better work-life balance. Construction projects like the recently completed Discovery Meadows Childcare Center and the fitness center that we built on the, on the site have provided those kind of benefits to our employees. At this time, Medimune is proposing a sports complex for the undeveloped site adjacent to the childcare center that you saw on the flyby. Uh, now the term complex, sports complex can be a little misleading. Uh, as is described, the elements of the project include the soccer field, uh, the tennis court, volleyball court, and a walking trail that goes around the perimeter of the Meadows, uh, the Meadows property that we're developing. The only built part of this project is a maintenance building. It's one stories, one story high, and it provides restroom facilities for people who are using the fields. It also provides a, a storage area for grounds and maintenance equipment that will keep, uh, that will be using, used to upkeep the fields. And also a small sitting area for users to go for picnic, or in case of inclement weather like a thunderstorm, it's a place of refuge or shelter from thunder. Uh, use of the grounds and the facilities exclusively for Medimune employees, as it's an ancillary use of the office and lab facilities that we have on the site. And that's part of the amendment agreement, uh, that, in the sketch plan that was approved by the council in two thousand thirteen. Um, and it's only to be used during daylight hours. We do not plan on having, uh, lighted use during, uh, during the evening time. So another of, uh, Medimune's strategic priorities is to promote sustainability in all aspects of our work, including the design of our new buildings. And as you hear from my colleague, the intent of the design of the maintenance building is to be a net zero facility, meaning it produces energy enough to support the use that it has. Um, and it's completely off the electrical grid. So we believe that the use of the land on the Meadows parcel of Quince Orchard Business Park aligns with the, the development agreement specified in the sixth amendment, uh, to the annexation agreement that the city and Medimune came, uh, signed in two thousand thirteen. That agreement states, uh, that we're striving to focus larger scale development next to Great Seneca Highway, next to our one Medimune way facility, and smaller development on the Meadows parcel close to the residential units. So to minimize development of the site, we propose to include, to not include additional parking, uh, on the Meadows parcel and requesting a twelve space parking waiver for parking for these reasons. Number one, for the past ten years, Medimune has been promoting our walkable campus through the placement of new sidewalks, repairing existing sidewalks in the neighborhood, and creating better walkways across Great Seneca Highway and Quince Orchard Road to facilitate employees walking back and forth. The sports fields are only a five to eight minute walk you've seen for the flyby. It's not a very big distance. And as a matter of fact, a lot of parents are already making that walk today. They go over to visit their kids at the childcare center during lunch. Number two, Medimune recently completed the construction of a new parking garage in the facility, which you're familiar with through the previous approval process. Uh, in increasing the, the, in addition to increasing parking capacity, the project also strives to centralize our parking footprint on the main part of the campus. We have provided some additional parking for the childcare center, mainly for drop off of, uh, of, of children to the facility, and also for the employees who are working specifically in that facility. But most of our parking is focused, um, on the main part of the campus. And number three, even though the garage provides more parking capacity, the project, we don't anticipate it to generate more parking demand for the site, uh, like an office or a lab project might. Uh, the employees who plan to use those sports fields are already working on our campus today. They're using the parking, uh, surface parking and the parking garages we already have. Um, furthermore, we've taken steps to create a design that minimizes the impacts to our neighbors. Uh, as you'll hear from, from Greg, the new maintenance facility will have a low building profile at one, uh, story high. It's not greater than the profile of the childcare center that's adjacent. Also, we've incorporated indirect lighting, bollards, to minimize glare from the lights, uh, to our neighbor. So in July, our team met with Quince Orchard Homeowners Association, uh, where we discussed the details of the project and we answered their questions. Um, we also shared the project descriptions and renderings that you've seen, um, with the Vista's homeowners association. And in both cases, we didn't have any outstanding, uh, items from them. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Greg.
Thank you, Eric.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
My name is Greg Brenner. I'm with W B Engineers Consultants, and I'm a managing principal in the Rockville office. So thank you for having me here this evening. Um, as Eric indicated, we're very, very excited to, um, promote a net zero facility. This facility, um, will have no connection to public utility on the electrical side. It'll be completely off the grid. It will have public sewer and water connections as required. The bulk of the project in regards to the built structure is about a thousand square foot building, of which a little over two hundred square feet will be two toilet rooms. The rest of the building will be storage. You can see in the rendering, I think if we can bring that up. So the rendering, you can see the, the canopy portion of it is really driven by the need for solar panels. And the solar panels to, to provide the necessary ventilation, hot water, and minimal heat to make sure we don't have any freezing conditions in the, in the toilet facilities. We've worked to minimize the, the overall, um, size of, of the building. Um, at the tallest point, it's about seventeen feet. The overall materials used for the building is very much in, uh, context with the new childcare facility. And, uh, basically, uh, no frills design, but trying to give that character in the contemporary look and feel, um, of our adjacent facility. The walking path will have solar powered bollards, uh, very low bollards and, uh, down casting light. The only other light would be at the toilet facilities inside the facilities and one light outside the maintenance structure.
All right. So what are the materials?
Um, it is a cement panel structure on C M U wall.
Cement fiber boards, yeah, on SIP panels, right?
Yeah.
All, all one, one color, one.
Yeah.
No real detail, just, just one.
Very uniform.
Flush surface, okay. And the roof is what?
The roof will be underneath the solar canopies, will just be a shingle roof, asphalt.
So what do you see on the underside?
On the underside of the canopy, you'd see the, no different than sort of the parking canopies that we have on campus. You'd see the underside of the solar, um, panels.
You were proposing in this one, though, wood slats, right?
There's some, yeah, some, some wood slats that would run underneath that.
Um, so Caroline, could you pull up the overall site plan? It doesn't matter which version, but, um, back when the childcare center was being developed, we had some discussions about getting pathways within the site that kind of cut through and didn't, didn't force people to walk around. I don't know how that landed. There were some, there were some sensitive areas, um, environmental impact areas. What happens here? If you're walking from the main campus or the main buildings, how do you get to this, this field? Because I assume you have like health club facilities back in the main building or things like that, where the people might be piggybacking on either announcements for a game or going back there to clean up or whatever.
So the, the main travel path from all the Medimune facilities would be the sidewalk along Orchard Ridge Drive.
So it would come down along, come around, okay.
Would not be cutting across the green space. The, the walking path that we're constructing only goes around the, um, uh, sports fields.
Uh, you may recall that.
You may recall that we, we did look into the possibility of, of doing that pathway, but we found that it was actually faster to walk along the sidewalks than to walk through the middle of the campus, plus the grades were challenging.
Okay.
And we're doing a stream restoration area, and so we really don't want people dropping through on that.
Fair enough. All right. So this is for the exclusive use of the Medimmune community. How, how is it secure? How, how do you ensure that exclusivity? Is, is, is it fenced? Is it just signs? What are you doing with that?
Other than the fences that are around the property to keep balls and things in, the, the security is handled like we handle the rest of our campus. We have a, a security team that monitors all of our facilities and all of our grounds. So they either do that through CCTV cameras, and they make regular rounds of the, all the properties throughout the day, 24/7.
Right, but direct, but specifically at the border of this, are there, is there a low fence, a high fence, no fence? What, what's the?
There's not a gateway or a key to, entry that you need to get through.
The fencing that's proposed around the, the sports complex is just to keep equipment in and from going down the ravine or into the road. There'll be card readers on the toilet facilities.
Well, that was a good, I was thinking about that, too, and I thought maybe it was just me. But, I mean, I noticed that, that you said that, of course, the restroom access is through electronic employee badges, but if, like, if a set of kids were, you know, coming by with their basketball and they started playing, I mean, how are you going to deal with something like that? I mean, because it is next, adjacent to a neighborhood.
Sure, sure. You know, and that's part of what's the job that our security team does. They would come over and kindly ask them to...
Kindly?
We have, we have a very friendly security team.
Well, it's a delicate balance. When I was told to get out of sort of the aesthetic to Orchard Ridge Drive, where there isn't this big barricade fence, or this, this, you know, unsightly...
Well, it's my understanding, from looking at your plan, that there's an eight-foot chain-link fence that runs the length of Quince Orchard Road and then well into your property by, by 80 or 90 feet, and it doesn't end until the little circle with the sign that says "No trespassing." Is that right? Okay. So what, the answer to John's question, there's an eight-foot chain-link fence?
There is, but it's not a secured camp, you know, boundary of people.
You could go around it if you wanted.
You can walk in the driveway, walk onto the field, just as they could do today.
You know, my question revolves around the fact that there's a synergy between the city and the, and the, and business. And we just approved Discovery Park, which is literally adjacent to that property. It, has there been any discussion about integrating the two, perhaps allowing the city partake in some, to some extent, to defray some of the cost perhaps, or maintenance perhaps, of allowing the public, or the residents around the area, to get into the park, to play in that area, as well as use Discovery Park, which is going to be used also as an amenity for the employees as well?
Sure. Well, back when we did the amendment agreement, part of the donation to the city, or, was the land for that park.
Right.
Yeah, and our thought was that we could be, give something back to the city for the city's use, and we're glad to see that they're proceeding with that, that project. And then the, the land on the Meadows, because of the development agreement, it specifies that it's only ancillary uses of office and lab employees. So following along with that, that's the intent.
I would have liked to, I mean, I, just, just on the aesthetics of it, I mean, it just makes more, it makes sense, because you are going to have kids that are, I mean, there's a residential community right there. And I know, living in the Cape Mayans, we have a 16-foot chain-link fence for the gate, and access pass cards, and everything else, and kids are still playing basketball. And we've had to restrict them, and, you know, it gets me a bit of a, it could be a problem. Again, if you've got, the guards are understanding and so on and so forth, and the, the neighbors understand, as you say, you've had discussions with the HOA?
Yes, we have.
And the results are that they understand this and that they're accepting of this?
They do. We had a thorough discussion of that. They're actually very intrigued about the city park that's being put in place, and asked us questions about that. So I think they feel as though having that city park in place meets a lot of their needs.
Okay. So the answer to the question is, there's an eight-foot chain-link fence, but it's not enclosed, it's not a full enclosure, and it's not secured by a gate.
Right.
So what's the eight-foot chain-link fence do for you?
When you're playing soccer, you kick the ball, and it goes down the hill. It's basically to contain, as Greg said, it's to contain the equipment that you're playing with, the tennis balls, the soccer balls, the volleyball from going somewhere we don't want to go.
Which makes perfect sense.
So the tennis court's not going to be enclosed?
No, that is enclosed.
That is.
That is.
But the soccer field is just along the one side and no turning?
No, it's all the way, all the way around. Well, it's, it's not on the, it's not on one side.
But it's not.
But there's a berm. Or, well, actually, it's a...
It's a, it goes down.
You can see it's line detailing.
They're going to lose some balls down. But they won't go out into the road.
But it's open on this side.
The road's protected, but the, but they're going to lose a few soccer balls down, though.
And there's a pathway to go get them.
Yeah, there's a pathway to go get them.
It's open on the parking.
It's open on the parking side, okay.
So that, that is a good addition to the, you know, the soccer field is so close to that road, you know? I've spent the last 10 years of my life watching soccer balls go into public areas, but the, but I think, you know, the trick for me is, is that I, I will encourage this large, you know, employment center to have private, you know, exercise facilities. I think that's a great thing, but we are making a slight compromise that even though it is private property, they're essentially setting up a slight public nuisance, right? For teenagers and whatever, you know?
It's an attraction.
And, yeah, and, and I don't want to discourage that, that sort of end bottom-of-the-valley trail that goes around there. I think that's great. That was kind of what I was pushing for back when we were talking about a bridge, you know, just to get something in interest, so people go, okay, nature, you know, like, I can see it. I'm more, I'm more than 30 feet away from it, or, you know, closer than 30 feet to it, but...
Would you go back to that site plan again, please? So the fence line adjacent to the street is where and what landscaping is going in along there? So the...
This, I don't know if you can follow.
Yeah.
We can see if we can zoom in a little more. So the fence, if you follow this line, it goes right up adjacent to the sidewalk here.
All right, so it gives some barrier, at least.
But there's no real buffer to the, on the public side, though? You really just want to begin with that?
It does set off of the asphalt by a few feet, right? So by, let's say, four or five feet. So there is an opportunity there for some landscaping.
I would think.
Which sidewalk are you talking about?
The, the big, the big eight-foot asphalt.
Well, this is right here.
Yeah, it's, it's, the fence is actually out there right now, and I don't know that there is four or five feet.
On the, on the site plan drawing, it looks like it's more or less right on the edge of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that's the property line, right on the side edge of the sidewalk?
It is right on the sidewalk, you're right. Right on the asphalt, that's right. Yeah, so there's no, there's no option, so.
All right.
There's an option on the inside, obviously.
Any other questions?
So, Mark.
No? All right. Anything else in the presentation? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application tonight? Please step right up to the podium, okay?
Eric, if you could.
But not, nobody's raised their hand or jumped up, so not seeing anyone. Caroline, what's the, what's the recap, please?
So there are actually two staff recommendations, one for the, the amendment to final plan, and then another for the parking waiver, so we will need two motions. So the first is that staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant AFP 7825-2018, amendment to final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance, with one condition, that is in your, your package.
What is the parking waiver based on?
What is it based on?
Yeah.
Well, we, we have parking calculations for fields and tennis courts, and, and so when you add it up, the requirements for what that would be without a parking, without a adjacent use, they were 12 short. So it's, it's based on, I don't know if I have it up there, but it's, a soccer field requires 10 spaces and a tennis court, too, and the volleyball court, too. So they require 14 spaces. The daycare requires 50 spaces, and they have 52. So that leaves you with short 12.
Okay. So it's not a, it's not an area calculation, it's a thing, the, the field itself requires, okay?
And there's no need for shared use because it's their daycare.
Right, and what, right. And they have, you know, the, the parking associated with, with the, the lab and office use that, we, we just, well, we felt like they had sufficient parking for the use.
Okay, fair enough. Can you do me a favor and cue up the drone view again? And I specifically want to look, everybody, at the, where the fence is, where the landscaping is or isn't along...
He just likes the drone.
In fact, if you bring it in, we can fly. Great.
It is cool.
I could stop it, too.
I should pause right there.
All right, so, let's, let's look at, yeah, the condition against the street. So relative to where the, the fence, you say it's there now?
Right there.
That actually is a sediment control fence, I think.
Well, that orange, but I mean, I think he, it's hard, you know, I don't know that I can zoom in.
Yeah, I don't think you can. And I...
And there's no landscaping adjacent to, well, I guess there is between the hiker-biker trail and the street.
That's a old sediment control fence that's right along there. And there was a berm, but that's being graded out, correct?
All right. So, so the, the impact of the streetscape is there's now a little bit of a softening of the view next to the street with the berm. It's not developed, and what's coming is a new eight-foot fence, or is it an existing fence? What is it?
It's a new fence.
It's a new eight-foot fence.
New fence to match the fence that's on the other side of the drive aisle.
By the daycare center.
At the childcare center.
Right, that's farther than I see it. All right. Okay. Cool. And the property line is, in fact, sitting right up against the hiker-biker trail, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what was, what drives where the fence line is on the new, the new part of this development? You mentioned from the end of the field, the, what is the...
It's in alignment with what's built outside of the childcare facility.
Yeah, but it's separated by a drive aisle, I mean, is that the only thing?
Pretty much.
Okay.
There's a small, you know, there's a small change in grade from the sidewalk up to the field, is about the two, four feet.
And it stops really, just, it's about, it looks like, and I'm truly guessing, because I can't see what the scale is, but on the side of the field next to the, where the Stream Valley area is, it's probably 20 feet.
Right, it falls off grade.
20 feet away from the edge of the field, the, the marked line field.
Right, and actually, my only, my only concern was along the street itself, was pushing a fence right up against the hiker-biker trail. If there's an opportunity to soften that edge and create a little bit of a buffer between the fence and the path, that's, that's my, my one concern, that with, with a chance to do it, I'll say right, you know, why not do it? Unless there's some really compelling reason to, to push it right up against the edge.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice, just to give you, give the jogger that's in the public trail, you know, slight, you're not right against the fence, you've got, you know, three, four feet, whatever that is.
And the chain-link fence is not the only view across the street, you know, from the homes, which is...
You can push it up against your new by two minutes path.
How much, how much?
Pushing it back, and certainly we can move it back, it's just going to make it hotter.
Right.
It's, what's the distance?
Yeah.
What's the distance between, the tightest distance between the hiker-biker and the right-of-way and the pathway around the field?
So I'm, I'm sort of looking for a discussion.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
The editor's pulling the fence back enough to get a landscape buffer.
But even four feet, five feet, more than enough to get the right buffer, yeah.
That would be enough, right, to get, get some small ornamental trees and some, some short...
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm as worried about the views as I am just when you're actually on the trail on your bike.
Yeah, the sense of enclosure, yeah. Yep. Okay. Any, any other questions, concerns? How could we address this?
You basically want a condition that the fence be moved three, four feet away, away from...
Probably closer to five with a dimension like that, but I, but, you know, I, I think we could do this to first, to staff, to work with the applicant to come up with a landscape buffer between the fence and the, and the...
Landscape buffer between the fence and the bike path.
Right. Whatever, whatever seems appropriate. And I'll, and I'll ask you, Caroline, potentially between the squad, maybe you could formulate that condition on the flyer.
Applicant to work with staff to create landscape buffer between fence and...
Hiker-biker path.
Hiker-biker path.
And the public right-of-way.
And public right-of-way.
And the purpose of the landscape buffer is not necessarily to block the view of the soccer field, because we get too big of, you know, landscape, it's going to go into the path if we're only five feet off, because we'll have to be...
Right.
Two and a half feet between the fence and the path.
It's simply to soften the edge so that people on the hiker-biker trail are not rubbing their elbows against the fence, and there's a little bit of a transition there so that the view from across is...
I mean, it might just be grass, you know, for...
I, I would think grasses, maybe, or, you know, low, low shrubbery, or even smaller trees work, work great.
Well, I don't, I don't think they can, they can't really put any woody plants in there because of the public utility use that's along there, so. I mean, it would have to, it would have to be some sort of low grass.
Yeah, which is fine. Yep. Or a little grass, whatever, ground cover, just enough to give some space.
That's, that's why all the trees are in between the, the actual pathway and the roadway because of...
And I think that's why we're deferring to staff to work through it, because I know there's some details like that you'll have to kind of moderate a bit, so that's okay.
Good.
Does that make sense for everybody? Okay. Any other questions, concerns? On the, on the parking waiver, just to be clear, does anybody have any concerns with that proposed?
I'm excited about it, so.
Smart. Let's go as the best.
Smart, yeah.
All right. All right, so we're ready for a motion, please, on the first portion, which is the amendment to final plan.
Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendations, I move that we grant AFP 7825-2018 amendment to final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance, with two conditions. That's written to the record.
Second, let's move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then a motion, please, on the parking waiver.
Chairman, I move that, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendations, that we grant a 12-space parking waiver for 501 Orchard Ridge Drive, AFP 7825-2018, finding it in compliant, conformance with Section 24-178, 168, rather, 24-172A and 24-222A of the city code.
Second. Let's move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passed, is announced. Thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Net zero is always a good thing. All right, that takes us to our next site plan, which is a SP, excuse me, SP site plan, 7955-2018, MBB Craft at 212, 216, 220, and 224 East Deer Park Drive. Construction of four single-family detached houses on existing lots in the RA Low Density Residential Zone, and this is final site plan. And again, presented from staff is Caroline, signing, good evening again.
Good evening again. So before I start, I just wanted to mention, this is actually going to be presented in, coincidentally, with the, the next agenda item, which is SP seven nine seven oh twenty eighteen. They were submitted independently of each other because one portion of it was outside of the city at the time that the applications were submitted, but the presentation will be all together, but.
Thank you to answer my question.
We're doing it concurrently. I said the wrong word, I knew it.
You answered my question.
So this is a final site plan review for SP seven nine five five and seven nine seven zero twenty eighteen, which were submitted to the City of Gaithersburg on June fourteenth and June twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen respectively. These applications propose the development of five combined, uh, single-family detached residential units on East Deer Park Drive and Central Avenue, and the annexation of the rear yards of three of the lots, two twelve, two sixteen and two twenty, and one half of the lot at three oh nine Central Avenue, which is here, become effective tomorrow, January third, and will be rezoned to the RA zone to match the remainder of the lots in the site plan. Site plans were filed separately, as I said, because lot two, which is this lot here, was outside of the city at the time that it was submitted, and the other four were submitted separately. So now I have my, my, the third drone, second drone of the night. Just to orient you, Central Avenue, which is a county road, is to the, to the east, and, uh, East Deer Park to the north. This is an adult daycare center and Gaithersburg, uh, air conditioning is here, and, uh, the, the aerial, the drone video comes from the east northeast, coming this way across the site to the southwest, uh, two different angles of that. Let's see if we can get that going. So again, this is Central Avenue and this is East Deer Park. So it's coming across the site kind of the opposite direction of the way the aerial shows. And this is all East, East Deer Park. Not much to see. And then, uh, in a couple of seconds, it's going to switch views and it'll show you the same, it'll, it, it's what they tell me is called a reveal, where it's going to basically fly, show the site from the ground or from the bottom up. And that's again, Central Avenue here and East Deer Park coming down that way.
Okay. Oh, I want some more.
He wanted more. Marty Mitchell is here to present, so I will turn it over to him.
Good evening for the record. Uh, my name is Marty Mitchell, I'm representing MBB Craft. As indicated, these lots existed from an eighteen eighty-eight plat. For the record, I have not been working on it since that time. But.
Seems like it though, right?
No, 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 actually, it's been less than a year, so we've been working through it. We have been working on the annexation plan, uh, which Caroline indicated would be approved tomorrow and the next few days, which brings all the backyards and lot two into the city of, uh, Gaithersburg and avoids having a conflict of a split between the county and the city of those particular lots. Our site plan is mainly focused along East Deer Park, and the frontage improvements that we have there, uh, we have a sidewalk dedication, uh, curb and gutter, a little bit of widening, uh, and there'll be some improvement of the lighting along East Deer Park there. We have shown, uh, two different house types. Two different house types, one is the Cambridge, which is on these three lots and on lot two, and then this is a Prescott on lot one. This lot is a little unique because it's a corner lot, you've probably seen this, it has a thirty-foot setback from East Deer Park, which narrows the, uh, building footprint slightly of what we had to work with. These units here are shown with a front entry garage and an optional side sunroom, which is shown on the architectural plans, that side sunroom is optional. This is in elevation rendering of the Prescott, which is the narrow unit. This unit is about thirty-six foot wide, you can go a little bit wider than that, but it will have to be a front entry garage because going back, you can't really see it, but the grade drops off significantly from the side of this house down to East Deer Park from where the driveway comes in on Central Avenue.
So that rendering is a mirror image of what you're really proposing then, right?
Uh, that is correct, yes, it's a reverse hand. This is another elevation of the same house type, the Prescott, uh, with a little different porch, and a change of siding on this facade on the front part. And then this is a hip roof, uh, and a different porch design that also is available with that house type. Uh, this is a picture of a house that we built, it is a Cambridge, this is a two-car side entry garage. As I say, the standard plan that we would offer would be front entry garage, but mainly what we're trying to show you here is these house types are traditional in nature, um, in what we're proposing. We may build all of them, we may build some of them, it's a timing issue as to, uh, if somebody comes along and wants to build a custom house, they will be back in front of the city, uh, for their elevation and their architecture. Uh, this is a siding elevation of the Cambridge, again, a two-car side entry garage with some stone as an option on this house type. Uh, this is a Cambridge with a three-car side entry garage and a side sunroom optional, um, that we would have. And I think we're back to the improvement plans where I talked about with the widening, curb and gutter, uh, public sidewalk along East Deer Park. A little bit larger view here, um, and then I think this is focusing on lot two, which we're doing concurrently. And these are some elevations, I don't think you need to go through all the architectural plans.
I do want to focus on one elevation, if you would, on the corner lot, lot two, um, the elevation that we face against Deer Park.
Uh, we do not have a picture, there is a part of the plans that shows a side elevation.
Of course, at this point, you don't really know which.
It could be this side or this side depending on the hand of it.
Well, you're going to be doing it where the garage is pulled inboard, right, it's not going to be on the corner, so.
Right, it's going to be reversed, so it would probably be more like, uh, the left side because it's a reverse hand, that would actually be the right side of the house.
So what will be the trigger for which version of these houses you do? Just a preference from a buyer?
Uh, that's usually the way we operate is, you know, the buyer does have some say. On that particular lot, um, it's, we cannot do a Prescott on this lot, I mean, excuse me, a Cambridge on this corner lot.
No, I understand, but, but you have some options there, but I just wondered how that, how that was going to be decided? It was going to be buyer's preference or if you were going to do some, some more research or? What about the materials for the houses? When you say siding, what kind of siding or when you?
It's anticipated to be vinyl siding.
Oh, really? Yes, sir. And when you show things like stone on the, on the exposed foundation, is that for sure or would you end up just having textured concrete?
In this plan, we probably have textured concrete, uh, concrete, stamped concrete. To give a brick look.
Right. Okay. All right, what about site improvements, just go with those real quick, what, what's happening for sidewalk landscaping?
There's a public sidewalk that's going in along the frontage and along the side of these lots. There's about two foot because the pavement varies, but about a two-foot, um, widening of the pavement and then curb and gutter along the side of that. And an improvement of the lighting that's there now.
Are you doing street trees also?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and are you turning the corner with the walk?
No, dead ends here, uh, mainly because there's right of way that's already dedicated all the way down the side of, I guess it's the east or northeast side of Central Avenue. This is county property here, and then there's already dedication when you go farther down. Lot three does not have any dedication, so the sidewalk would come to a dead end there. So it, it's planned to be able to cross over Central Avenue at the intersection.
Is that a single lane driveway that's coming up from the street? And then it.
Yes, it's, it's about a ten or twelve foot wide driveway and then widens out to the width of the garage, probably about, uh, eighteen feet.
Is that because of the standards set by the city or by the county, or is that just something that?
Well, we, you know, I'm not sure whether there's two outside spaces required, but this gives us sufficient to have two tandem spaces in the driveway itself and then narrows down from a pavement standpoint.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
My question is on the, frankly, the usefulness of providing a four-lot length of sidewalk along, specifically along Deer Park Avenue. You know, having driven this and going up and down on Google Earth, you know.
You have to start somewhere. That is, that is the theory of, of our pedestrian and bike path, is that we want to promote that and, um, as we go along, hopefully we can add more.
It's also within a half mile of the, the train station, which I didn't point out, uh, past the bridge.
Washington Grove Station.
Washington Grove.
But I guess the addition of sidewalks on any of the other, fronting any of the other properties along Deer Park would have to be a city-funded, is, is there already existing right of way for sidewalks? Would that require, um?
It would probably require either an easement or dedication, so.
So.
This is, this is, this, the street does get pedestrians on it and it's very dangerous and we want to promote it where we can.
So we're giving them a hundred and twenty feet of safe.
Haven.
I told a story, I think, at Mayor Council recently about building an office building twenty-five years ago and I railed against City of Rockville's requirement, and I put in this big hiker biker that started at one end, stopped at the other end, went nowhere on either end. Twenty years later, I should go somewhere, in the meantime, it did nothing. But twenty years later, it's actually connected now, so.
There's not going to be any HOA attached to these houses, right?
Uh, no, no.
So then as far as the design of the houses, you have like three Cambridge's in a row. Is there going to, any stipulation to vary the, the facades and the frontage so that they're all looking the same and the colors as well, or is that just going to be, if I want a gray house and the guy next door has a gray house, it's going to be a gray house regardless?
No, we're not, we can stipulate something in the approval that says that you can't have the same house type with the same materials and colors next to each other.
Okay.
So there can be a variable.
Do we have to put that in a?
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's something we've done in MXD zones, we don't typically, we have not typically done it in, in a, uh, you know, individual, things like that, but we.
We can discuss that, I want to get through the questions, but that's a good, good point, so, any other questions? Uh, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Please. If you'd come up to the podium and state your name and address or, or neighborhood for the record, please. And I guess I should mention it's a three-minute with a thirty-second warning, but we're all friends here, so.
Name's Rob Mixel at two oh eight East Deer Park, just adjacent to lot number eleven. Reason I came here today, I've talked to Marty on several occasions already, uh, by email, never really met before, but, um, last, well, December twenty-first, we had a really heavy rain. I've been a resident there, bought the house nineteen ninety-five. My son grew up, he's twenty now, he's going to college. Then Woods was his playground growing up and we enjoyed it. On December twenty-first, we had a really hard rain. And I have a video I can email out and I didn't send it to Marty yet either. But there's a tremendous amount of water comes out of the woods and runs right across my backyard towards my house. And I, when I put my driveway in years ago when I replaced it, I had deer's paving do it and they put a swale in. So it's like a river running beside my house, under my porch, my cars, all the way down around out to East Deer Park. I put some drainage system in the back and tried to relieve this over the years and of course it's clogged up now with the chipmunks and everything, nesting all the eight-pointed stuff down in. But, um, I would like to have some kind of swale or something because looking at the contours of the new property lines, the houses are actually going to be higher than my property, which the slope is going to be even greater going from them house, the new houses to my property, which Rockville's going to create a more of a runoff on my property. So if we could do some kind of swale or something to catch that water, run it out to the street or storm system, whatever we have to do, I appreciate it.
Okay. I know we have storm water management requirements on site plans, we can, we can answer that in more technical terms, but I want to get all the comments in first, so. Is there anything else you want to add it to the?
Uh, one other thing I want to bring up is, I've been there since ninety-five, it's a residential area, speed limit is twenty-five on the road. The city has put speed humps in, well, people will still get airborne on it. And as far as peak pedestrian traffic, there's not much and we, personally, I like that because it's a very low crime area and the more sidewalk you put in, the more pedestrians are going to come down through. I feel the crime rate's going to go up. That's just my feeling on it. We love it there and it's very peaceful, you don't feel like you're in the city at all, but you're close to everything and it just, I don't, we, me and my wife both, we don't want any sidewalks in front of our house. The proposal of promoting sidewalks down to East Deer Park, uh, I'm against it, that's all I can say.
Fair enough, all right. Thank you for that. Do you want to address storm water management now or should we?
Yeah.
This was actually a comment that was brought to us, uh, from staff and the whole entire site plan and grading was revised, uh, based on that and there is a natural increase in grade along East Deer Park as you head towards Central and the bridge and the railroad tracks. So our property is a little bit higher than the Mixel property. You can see right here that there is a swale that has been designed, in fact, that's the reason this house does not have a side sunroom option shown, just because there was not enough room. So we bought a swale down the side of that house and brings it back out to the street and then all of these houses, um, across the site plan, you can see there's a swale going between the houses here, there's a swale going between here, and there's another swale, so the backyards were regraded and that's why you got all these additional squiggly grade lines in order to force the water, uh, to the street to avoid this, the natural situation that does occur right now, and Mr. Mixel's right, everything comes out of the woods and goes across his driveway. So we'll be picking up where we're, within our limited disturbance and running it around each side of the houses.
Okay. So that's, you're, so you're talking about to the left of lot eleven is now sheep off to the left and you're going to move it towards the north, towards the street, is that right?
Yeah, if you see these dash lines running here.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
Yeah, they're all kind of naturally flowing until they come right in front of Mr. Mixel's property or his house and then through the driveway right about here, and in fact, you can see the erosion on the, um, I guess sort of the west side of his driveway even before this latest rainstorm, which topped off the year record. But that was what we were trying to do, is pick it up here.
Thank you for that explanation, we'll probably add a little bit more of that in discussion, but, but thank you for addressing that. All right, uh, anyone else would like to comment on this application, please?
Dave Morningstar, two nineteen eight East Deer Park, I guess I'm crossing lot one. I know you've got a side entrance on Central Avenue. Have you come up, if anybody comes up over that hill coming down to East Deer Park in front of GS, JC, you cannot see anything. So I don't know how you're going to expect, I mean, unless you understand, you don't, are you familiar with the area?
I don't know which lie you're talking about, yeah, I'm familiar with the area.
Coming from Central Avenue around, you can bear right and come up to the bridge or you've got to come over this little skinny, little side street, it's supposed to be the end of Central Avenue.
Right.
You cannot, when you're coming up to the crest, you cannot see over that. So you're going to have two driveways stuck in there, coming out from the side on that part of Central Avenue?
They're not from the side, their front entry garage is onto Central Avenue.
Yeah, the driveways are coming off of that little area I'm talking about, what I'm saying is it's like a hidden entrance there. And I totally agree with my neighbor about the speed, the traffic there is nuts. I mean, you're going to, you know, I realize that these lots have to be developed sometime, I suppose. It's been wonderful, I agree with them, looking at trees. But it's dangerous out there, it truly is, I mean, for walkers it certainly is, but for just me coming out of my driveway or getting mail out of my mailbox, I can get picked off. I'm serious. People are going fifty down that road.
So just to clarify, would you put the site plan up and, and make sure we're, if you can point as you described where?
Well, I mean, Central Avenue.
Put the rendered one up, the rendered, I'll put the colored one up.
Give him just a second to pull up the plan. I think.
Yeah, now you got, you have two driveways in an extremely short distance, right here at this crest at the very top. You cannot see anything. You've got traffic coming around this way fast. You, you really have to be careful. Everybody that lives there can agree with it.
So you're talking about the movement that's coming off of West Deer Park, turning right onto Central?
No, the other one is the Y.
Going around Central. Going around Central down.
Yeah, from Hershey's or wherever you're coming from.
Yeah.
Over this, over this crest here. You have a choice of bearing right and going to the bridge or, or, I mean, the only thing I can see is sensibly widening that section of, uh, Central Avenue to where it's two, actually a two-lane road. Right now, it's so narrow, there's barely enough room for one, one vehicle coming over the hill. So I'm just suggesting that it may be a little more complicated than just throwing in driveways there. For safety reasons, but, um.
So you're concerned if somebody's backing out of those driveways, then the cars.
Driving front end out of the driveway.
Cars coming from the south or coming from the bottom of this plan heading up.
Now, you mentioned, you, somebody over here mentioned they've driven around over that way, you did.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about. It's right at that Y. Basically, the high point of the crest is right at the point of that Y. And you sort of, you sort of bump up over it as you, as you veer left.
Yeah, and you'll have people that come toward you that think this is one lane and they're taking up the whole road. So you end up winding up over in the ditch in the mud to the right over there.
Okay.
But the, the speed is a huge deal. Uh, those speed bumps never did anything. They had them right in the beginning. They ended up cutting sections out of them to flatten them out. And so you can go around going like 40.
Fair enough. Anything else?
That's it.
I think we'll add that to the discussion as well. All right.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to, uh, comment? Please, come on up. Is there anyone?
Huh?
Please, oh, oh, no one else is coming up?
No.
Okay. All right. Trudy, what are you, um, you queuing up for us?
I'm trying to queue up Google Maps, the Street View on Google Maps, so you can see what they're discussing.
The only, the only thing to remember about Street View is the camera on the Google car is about 12 feet above the ground. So the perspective, because I'm looking at it right now, the perspective is a little different than what you have unless you're driving an 18-wheeler, um, view-wise.
183.
Thank you.
To the left, no, no.
It's going to be the other one. It doesn't always cooperate.
Right.
To the right, that's what I was like, I think, to the right.
Right, yeah, good old days, right?
Good old days, yeah.
So I, I, I kind of went past where the crest, you can see that the problem with the crest is I went too fast. But you can see.
Yeah, you can see, you can see from there.
You can't see anything there, but as you come over, the driveways are about here and here.
Yeah, it is pretty narrow.
This is a county road in that area, so.
Uh, good point. So the central, that, that Lego Central's in the county, so the, the city line is going to essentially be right at the end of the driveway, is that right?
That's correct.
For the property line?
We actually contacted the county just to inquire about, when, when we were considering sidewalks and curb and gutter on Central, what, what their plans were. And they had no, uh, they indicated they have no plans to do anything with that road for any, for the development of any of the lots there. They will just go straight to, um, to a building permit, is my understanding. So there's no site plan review.
For the curb cut, or for the driveway?
Yeah. And there, there are other lots that, that would be developed in the county further down. Lot, lot three is.
Yeah, lot three's the only one in there.
Lot three is the one and also, that's in the county.
That's even more precarious because it's right at the street.
Yes.
That's really precarious.
But that driveway was already flipped. To put it there on the low side, which is not where you usually want to have the driveway, you went on the high side, so it was closer to the crest if you flipped it the other way.
Your driveway or the lot three?
Lot three's driveway right here.
Right, which, you know, I don't know what we can do about that tonight, but i- is there any on lot 28 or whatever? You called yours lot two in the corner, what is?
It's, it's going to become lot 28.
I'm sorry, part of the annex, or the record plot, it changes the numbers.
Lot 28 on this plan, um, is there, is there any advantage to flipping that so the driveway is away from the intersection a little bit?
I think the, the way you have it right now, that driveway is very close to the crest of the, crest of the hill.
But it's also where you don't know if the car's coming your way or heading off to the right. I mean, you know, it's a little bit of an ambiguous zone right there for approaching cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that driveway is sitting at 22, so if you're in a car, you're going to be at 25, 26.
Yeah.
As an elevation, the road here at the high point is 24. If you move it down to 20 and you have a low slum car, it could get worse.
Okay.
For the person sitting in the driveway.
Either way, yeah.
I see a hand up, please. Uh, name, address, or neighborhood, if you don't want to give your address, please?
Janet Newman, 211 East Deer Park Drive. So I live across from the Mixels and down from the Morningstars. And I concur with the, this driveway right here, as it is going onto Central off, coming from the bottom here up. It's already dangerous because the cars are coming around from, from the bridge towards you. And so if you're like trying to zoom in and get down that road and that person's backing out, it's a guaranteed accident. I mean, there's just no way to avoid that because the, the slope is just too much. So I don't know, you know, being a county road, if, if it can be widened, um, but that driveway on the parcel of 28 here is definitely just an accident waiting to happen.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. I, do we have any analysis from our traffic folks about this? I mean, did they look at it or what? I mean, this all sounds like legitimate concerns. The geometry is very clear that with the, the vertical alignments.
The, the plans have been reviewed by our, by our public work staff, the engineering.
But, but that was as it relates to the city, I guess not.
No, they looked, they looked at both.
They look at both?
They look at the entire site plan.
Another question I have is regarding the tree mass. Is this dark green is, I'm assuming to be left as?
Can you come a little closer to the microphone there?
Um, on the dark green piece, if, is that to be left with the current woodedness that's there currently? And then what are the little, uh, gold trees versus the green, uh, ones that are sort of in front of each of those houses? Are those new things that are to be put in or existing?
Okay, so just generally maybe take everybody through with the landscape schemes.
This is the existing forest in the back. These are some identified trees because of their size. The goal is, uh, street trees, uh, which we've worked with the city as to which, uh, variety we would use on those. And then these are just, um, illustrative of one lot trees that would have to be planted as part of the construction of the houses.
Okay, so everything that's in the light green and underneath the houses area, that would all be cleared, cut?
That would be cleared for long, yes.
All right, thank you.
This forest is probably about 40 years old, so it's not, there's only a limited number of large specimen trees.
Okay. So I, I guess I'm a little bit taken aback on the, on the amount of concern over the traffic and the vertical alignment of the road and, and some of the, some of those issues that ordinarily caught during an earlier, earlier review of the plan, um, or analysis by, you know, public work. So, uh, can we give you a sense of here balance? What, what's the, what can we do about it? What can we not do about it? What's the?
Well, we don't have a control over Central Avenue, um, so, um, this is, we, we had not heard previous to tonight, uh, that concern. I just, I had not, we haven't heard, had not heard that, so.
I mean, uh, are we discussing?
Yeah.
I mean, I think there, I think there's some legitimate concerns. I, I don't see any difference between concerns. I mean, I've traveled this road a lot and lived in the city for a long time. So I know, know the details of this street and how, how it gets used and how there is speeding incidents and I'm probably one of them. But the, but, uh, but, you know, I, there's from a some standard standpoint, that's what this whole neighborhood is, you know, stretching all the way down into the county. You know, up all the way back to 355 as well as back through, uh, the rest of Gathersburg down to, uh, the new apartment buildings that are down on 355. So, I mean, it's kind of the condition that we have very tight driveways, emptying out onto an unnecessarily fast collector, right? Although it's meant to be not a collector, it's meant to be a neighborhood street, but it's ended up being a collector, right? So, uh, we have a lot of conditions like this. You know, adding two more, I, I would argue five more, you know, is, is, um, more of a burden on that street. In some sense, it might actually slow traffic down. Uh, one of the, one of the, I think, practical things you'll see in a lot of the habitated houses have been, you know, family to family, been there for a long time. Is to have a turnaround in their drive, you know, which, so that they can actually go head out instead of only backing out. So that could be a practical solution to some of this to give, give folks a fighting chance. They can pull out and set it back out. But, uh, but I, I don't see a really easy way to do that on the site plan, but, you know, somebody could stare at it long enough to figure out a way to, you know, put a, hopefully a pervious surface, give you the ability to turn around on, on the lot and not have to. But that, but that's how, you know, homeowner, the other 300 homeowners in this neighborhood that all do the exact same thing that we're proposing here.
Fair enough, I, I guess, um, but, but those are conditions that, that, that happened to them. It didn't, it wasn't created as part of the, the initial layout. Our record's still open. If you have a comment, please.
Okay, I'm Dan Newman, I'm, uh, Dan Newman, I'm at 211 East Deer Park. And I think that you're off topic a little bit. I think that what we're saying is with the, uh, you know, the fixes to the Mixel's drainage, that the Deer Park part is fine, okay? I mean, basically, we're not talking about that. We're talking about one of the lots on Central. One of the things that's happened here is you have two things to vote on, okay? You have a, a group of four and a group of one, and it turns out that the one we're most concerned about the traffic on is the one. Okay? They've split this in a way that, uh, so you could think about it in a different way, I think. And we're not really concerned about additional cars. Four, four or five houses isn't, isn't going to make a difference in traffic on East Deer Park. Okay? But that berm on Central is really a big up and down. Not too many people take it. So when you're going around that, that thing now, when you're going off to Central, staying on Central rather than going around to the Helmberg Bridge. What you really do is you pay a lot of attention to the traffic coming around the corner because there's a lot of it. You don't pay so much attention to what's going on over the hill. That's the concern, okay, over this berm. Okay, that, um, that's about the only, that's what we're really talking about from a traffic point of view. That's it. Okay?
Fair enough.
And this road is narrow. It's really only one lane. Okay, it isn't two lanes. You can meet if you drive off the road a little bit and it's okay, um, but it's really only one lane.
Fair enough, appreciate that. Appreciate the refocus there.
Do you think that clearing the trees from the side of Central Avenue as you build the houses, that that would give more visibility to those houses when you, no?
I, I think it will give more visibility because.
That's my.
But the houses, once the houses are built, then you'll be blocking it to a certain extent.
Yeah. So one more question, just kind of a hypothetical, we put the site plan back up. The, the geometry of the, the two lots at Central and West Deer Park, um, all right, so conceptually, if those are rotated 90 degrees and they both emptied onto West Deer Park, right?
East Deer Park.
Or East Deer Park, excuse me. I recognize that there's a dark green zone that's preserved tree stand or, or maintained tree stand. But in, in the, the overall working of these lots when it was happening and when it was being developed, was that ever looked at or considered? This is already platted.
This is already plated.
So it would take a resubdivision.
It would take a resubdivision.
Which.
1888.
1888.
And I know that's not on my R with my significant.
But, I mean, and, and also the cost of doing the resubdivision as far as the engineering costs and stuff like that.
Really?
Well, so then you have to have a shared, shared pipe stem and all the rest that gets.
Not necessary.
Uh, you have three lanes, three, okay.
No, he just rotated those two, he just took the two and rotated it 90 degrees. So they dumped out, you'd have a side yard on Central instead of a side yard on, on East Deer Park.
Right.
That's all, I mean, that was.
I got you.
Does, my, that's my question, just if that was ever looked at as a, as a solution to get rid of that load on Central, that's all.
No, you would either have to have an easement or a shared driveway or the biggest problem is lot 27 because of the dual frontages. You would have to have a really odd shaped house.
I'm just saying if you replatted the two.
He's shifting your plats.
You just simply replat the two.
But, but again, what do you, you'd still have that corner lot that has the double restriction of, of setbacks from, from the, from the front and the side.
It would be that rotated 90 degrees and flipped essentially. That's all it would be.
And, and, I mean, it would take out that forest conservation area.
That's the one thing that would be the downside, it would take out more of the, more of the existing.
So, question about Central Avenue. I'm looking at what Danny has up on his screen, which is the colored plan. And Central Avenue is a county road, but it crosses over the city of Gathersburg line, right sort of in the middle of lot 28. Does it become a city road at that property line?
No, it's a, usually it, the, the difference with county and city roads is it goes to one intersection to the next, so.
All right. Just for the moment, set that aside. Any other concerns we need to get on the table before we try to wrap this into something we can do? Any other, any other issues? No? Okay. One way to handle this, and I like the proposal from Testman, I apologize, I've already forgotten your name, I apologize. But the idea that there's that one site plan, the one individual one that does seem to be the issue in play about, about alignments. Um, and we don't know what's possible at this point. We don't know if there's another way to shift the, shift the driveway, repurpose the way it's oriented or whatever. Is to move forward with the, the four lots and defer the fifth one for a little bit more staff analysis and, 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 you know.
Yeah, I like the.
That's the best I can term it, analysis or, or consideration. Um, I see Frank and Trudy discussing it here. Any concerns with talking about it in those terms? They are technically separate applications, so. There is that. Um, anybody have any thoughts on that? Commissioners, any concerns?
I, I guess, my thought is, looking at lot 28, do we envision something that, knowing we can't, as the, that us, as the commission, the applicant or the city, can't really do anything about Central Avenue? So I don't see any option for lot 28 that does not have a driveway onto Central Ave and still has it, you know, with a house on it. So my question is, okay, if we take that, if we defer that and send these guys back to look at it again.
I think it's like this, this is the first we're hearing of the concern.
Yeah.
And ordinarily, this gets, um, surfaced early enough on that the traffic engineer can take a look. There might be some other mitigating strategies. There might be other ways to think about even, even site improvements that the county would allow. I, you know, I don't know what those, those properties are and we can't, and we can't imagine that tonight. I'm just suggesting that it's, it's something that you take another look at, both in terms of what's possible. You know, just, while maybe you abandon that Lego Central, I would make it a private drive-in from East Deer Park. I don't know. I mean, just, there's all kinds of things out there potentially.
Well, if they, and I, I know that, um, Mr. Mitchell recommended against. No, um, no, no, Mr. Mitchell. That, uh, I mean, it could be as simple as making that a mirror image, approving it with a condition that they flip the, flip it.
But I don't know that, all my point is that, my only point is that we don't know with this, a new, a new concern has been raised tonight based on, you know, it wasn't in the staff analysis and that's, that's perfectly fine. I'm not, I'm not faulting anybody, just, I, I want you all to have the time to look at this more carefully based on what we've heard tonight so that we don't rush into just an automatic approval, that's all, all I'm suggesting. It's, it would essentially push the, that one site plan back another cycle or another, another set of meetings, but.
I, I mean, we could flip the driveway, but that's really the only alternative. And I think that's lowering the driveway, creating a bigger issue, but if you want it flipped, that's fine. Any other alternative that you're proposing that we go back and look at is a substantial change to that area for recorded lots.
Right.
And that's just not as part. And that's just not as part of the site plan, uh, for the county road.
Keep in mind, though, that, that we have a fairly narrow, um, set of criteria that we judge site plans, and we're not here being architectural police, you know, on, on the look and field work, we, we add that to come. One of the fundamental purposes of doing this is safety. There's compatibility in the use, you know, so residential, we can kind of get over that argument. But, but if there's any question about safety or the enjoyment of adjacent property owners because of the impact of this site plan, we have to take it very seriously. And my only point right now is that a concern's been raised that we haven't had time for staff to fully analyze. And to do it here, you know, kind of on the fly and say, okay, flip the driveway, that'll be better, we don't know, right? Until somebody takes a little more sober look at it and, you know, does a little bit of scratching on some paper and looks at some of the elevation changes. For all I know, you know, with a couple of people around the table and an hour's worth of, you know, noodling on some scratch paper, a slight adjustment in elevation and maybe an orientation of the driveway could fix the problem, I don't know. I mean, at this point, it's a, it's a, legitimate concern's been raised, and I just want to give staff time to fully analyze, that, that's my only, my only issue, I'm not suggesting there's a solution even out there. It may come back that this is the best way to solve this problem and we have to, we have to move forward under, under staff's recommendation. So that's, that's my issue right now, I, I don't feel comfortable approving it if there's any question of safety on the, wrapped around this.
I agree with you.
Well, what I'm saying is this puts off that for at least a month, if not longer.
Which, you know, if we avoid a head-on collision, I'm not sorry about that.
No, I, I understand that, I just wanted you to be aware of.
Yeah.
What, what that means.
But the other four, I mean, I, I feel like right now we have a satisfactory resolution to the four, so in terms of marketing or, or whatever other globalization needs to happen for the project, that can certainly move forward, I think.
I, I agree with you. So we're talking about this now, we're not, and the next one is the, one is the real issue.
It's my proposal, I'm just, I'm sort of putting out that the commissioners consider and, and staff to react to, and, and by doing this, you may have other issues that, that I don't know about that you need to, need to caution me on, but that's my proposal right now anyway, is, so, concerns, questions?
Trudy, if we go, you, you said you were concerned about, you know, thirty days.
If not longer, yes.
If not longer, why is there a necessity to, to move so quickly on something if that is the problem, if we can get the other four on the, on the record?
I would say that Mr. Mitchell would have to ask that question, because.
Hey, we have worked diligently with staff for about eight or nine months.
Right.
With recorded lots.
Right.
Uh, to have an additional delay, to not be able to address this without a major road improvement project, uh, I don't think is fair under the circumstances. I mean, we can address with the flipping of the driveway, but I, I appreciate the safety concerns, okay? And I've been doing this for thirty years, so I have a little bit of understanding of road geometry and driveway geometry.
Right.
And I'm taking that into consideration, but the other side of that is the fact that we've got a hundred and twenty-some year old platted lots, it could have been built on this location at any time.
Sure, it absolutely could have. And as Matt said, we've got this condition all over the city, unsafe driveway entrances, because over time, things have grown up somewhat ad hoc, and that's, we know that's a fact of life. But there's no reason to add to that if we have the opportunity to do something else. Quite frankly, you could come back with a road section, a simple section drawing through the property and the, and the road or lengthwise, longitude of the road section, and, and demonstrate that the alignment actually is fairly safe. You know, that all of this is good, good, um, good concerns to raise, but based on the, the, the sightlines of somebody in a car looking up the hill, it may all be fine. We just don't know, we don't have that analysis in front of us. I mean, that's, that's part of what, what could be, could be proven out over the next couple of weeks. Or we could discover it's a bigger problem than we knew, that's all. I mean, that's, it could be a simple solution, it could be, could be bigger, but, but we can't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward if there's a legitimate concern out there that there's some, there's some safety concern, so that's, that's where I'm at.
And we're not saying that we're not going to move forward, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I'm comfortable with the, with the four that we're talking about now, but the second, I mean, this C, which is three oh nine, Central Avenue, or whatever, I'm, I'm not comfortable moving forward with that.
Okay, any other concerns, any other issues? We're all staring at.
Yeah.
I'm sort of on the fence on this one, just because, you know, as, as I stated before, I'm, I'm looking at this and I have a very strong suspicion that after a thirty-plus day review, we're going to come back and be looking at the exact same thing. Or something with little to no change, and so.
And that's fine with me, as long as, as long as our traffic engineers and others have taken another look at it to make sure that whatever those sightlines are, whatever the acceptable speeds are that are related to, that all of that is, has been looked at.
I, I would lean more towards putting a series of conditions on this for further study with staff, I mean, I think everybody's clear on our concerns. I think, you know, we've enumerated them very clearly as far as sightline concerns, and I'm not sure. I'm comfortable delegating the, the next step of review to this to staff and the Public Works Department with a condition that sightline analysis be done. Alternate driveway configurations be looked at and reviewed with staff, you know, to find the safest.
Prior to the issuance of the building permit.
The billing permit to let this move forward.
Fair enough.
A, we can all sit up here and design on the fly, which will, as you stated, you know, is not a good idea, but, you know, circular driveway, that, this lot has actually room in the front yard for a circular in-out. Maybe that's the right solution, but.
You could raise it eight inches a foot, like you, like you mentioned, there's other.
To me, those are all refinements that can be worked out with staff, it's a pretty straightforward concern, and I share Trudy and the applicant's concern about holding this up from moving forward for an indefinite period of time when, you know, I'd be comfortable approving it with conditions.
Yeah, I, I would support that idea if you guys are, if you guys are interested.
That sounds like a good alternative. All right.
Danny?
I'm, I'm still, I mean, anytime you raise safety concerns, and I, and I don't think, I mean, in a scheme of things, thirty days, I don't think is unreasonable. I'm looking at it from a reasonable perspective, I don't think revealing that's one lot for thirty days is unreasonable. I don't think it is. That's just my opinion, I'm one of five, so, there you go.
Condition.
You want to do, you want to try to do a condition?
Okay.
So what would that condition sound like? Trudy, do you, or, Trudy, Caroline, do you have a?
Well, we can say something like, uh, applicant to work with staff to, uh, complete a site distance, a sightline analysis and determine appropriate driveway placement on Lot two. It's, it's, it's twenty, it says twenty-eight here because we're going to re, uh, renumber them as part of a new record plat.
But is, is that, is that a part of this, or is that the part of the next one?
Well, we're doing them concurrent.
Okay, okay, all right, I thought, I didn't, okay.
And it would be a condition of the second, you'll have, you'll do two motions, and you would make that a condition of the, of SP seventy-nine seventy.
Okay, okay.
And, and we would say prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Is the applicant okay with that kind of wording, is that, does that state the case?
Yeah, we're willing to work with staff, see what we can come up with.
And I think, um, uh, to fill out that word location, which I think is the word you used, it's, um, you know, configuration.
Driveway configuration.
Elevation, yeah, it's, it's, how was it designed?
Driveway design, is that a better word?
Yeah, maybe. So you've got location, configuration, and design. Right?
Throw, throw them all in there.
And question for, for staff on procedures, since this is a county-owned road, um, things like warning, hidden driveway signage out, you know, in that median that would be on county property, is that something that, you know, what is the process for that? Because that's one possible arrow in the quiver here.
We, we would have to find out, because we don't know.
We can just stick a sign out there and ask forgiveness, right?
What sign?
That's how, yeah.
I'm a function of my marriage, you just asked for forgiveness.
Well, along with the.
To be clear, that's part of this discussion, again, trying to do this on the fly is, is incomplete.
I mean, that's a.
My, my point to asking it is to make sure that things like that are considered as part of this as well, whether it's something the city does, the county does, or the applicant does. It's a holistic look at this at a staff level.
Okay.
That's a good, good suggestion.
All right, anything else for the record?
For the record, Danny LeBorne is still okay with moving forward with the four, but not this one, I, I just want that for the record?
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, move on.
Caroline, we have a proposed condition on the second application, please, could you do that again?
Applicant to work with staff to complete a sightline analysis and determine the appropriate driveway configure, you want all of them? Configuration, design, and location. And location, prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
So that's for all of them?
No, that's just for, that's for, for SK.
Okay, okay.
Seventy-nine seventy.
Okay.
So there'll be two separate motions.
But we'll do the first one first.
All right, any other concerns?
No.
All right, uh, is there a motion, please, on SP seven-nine-five-five, that's the first application for the four site plans?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report's findings and recommenda, recommendation, grant SP seven-nine-five-five dash twenty-eighteen final site plan approval finding and compliance with section twenty-four dash one-seventy and twenty-four dash one-seventy-one of the city zoning ordinances with three conditions.
Second.
That's two.
That's two conditions.
Two conditions.
Sorry, I'm, I'm reading what's on the packet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, two conditions, second. It's moving to second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. On SP seven-nine-seven-zero, is there a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant SP seventy-nine seventy dash twenty-eighteen final site plan approval finding and compliance with section twenty-four dash one-seventy and twenty-four dash one-seventy-one of the city zoning ordinances with, this is now two conditions, right? Second.
As written in the record.
Second.
It's moving to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed?
Posed.
That passes four zero one, no, four one zero, excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if only we had traffic like there was in eighteen eighty-eight.
Force somebody, man.
Sure. There you go. Thank you very much, good luck, and, and, uh, please work with us to, to help solve this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to AFP eight-zero-four-six dash twenty-eighteen, Gaithersburg Station Apartments, the conversion of two retail units into eleven residential units located at three seventy East Diamond Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone. Amendment to final site plan and presented from staff is Chris Berger, good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Thanks for sticking out.
Uh, staff is before you tonight to present AFP eighty-four-six twenty-eighteen, the conversion of retail space into residential units at Gaithersburg Station Apartments. The subject property is located at three seventy East Diamond Avenue, and it's located in Old Town. The property is owned CBD Central Business District. Property measures six point one acres and contains a five-story building measuring more than nine hundred thousand square feet. The applicant, Archstone Westchester at Old Town LP, requests approval to convert two of the four vacant retail spaces along East Diamond Avenue into eleven residential units comprised of six one-bedroom units and five two-bedroom units. The application comes before the planning commission in accordance with sections twenty-four dash one-six-eight and twenty-four dash one-seven-two A of the city code, which require commission approval for amendment to site development plan applications. The historic district commission provided a courtesy review and reacted faithfully to the design. The economic and business development committee also reviewed and was supportive of the project. And now, uh, Mr. Mark Drake of Preston Drake Architects will provide a presentation.
Do you want to talk first a little bit about the background?
Thanks, Chris. Ben Stoll with Equity Residential here on behalf of the owner of the properties. Wanted to talk very briefly about the reason that we feel as though this conversion makes sense. We've owned the asset since early two thousand thirteen, and despite diligent efforts to lease the retail space at even what we would consider below-market rents, we just have not found a market for this amount of retail space. Retailers do not want to be the first mover and be located next to vacant retail space, and so we're looking for an alternative way to activate that streetscape. And so we're doing that by converting a little over twelve thousand of the square feet of the retail space to a residential use, which we think will activate the streetscape in a different way than it was originally contemplated, but we think that that will help strengthen our ability to lease the remaining retail space. And we think that we've done that thoughtfully from an architectural perspective, um, working with staff on a couple of different revisions to that, and Mark can walk you through some of the details. But we appreciate your consideration and are happy to answer any questions.
Just before we move on to the design piece, but just net the, the amount of square footage then still left for retail?
About forty-two hundred square feet.
Okay.
Okay, so, here you can see the existing, I don't know if this is working, here you can see the existing, uh, retail bay, I believe this is Bay C, the smaller bay. And you can see we have some residency units on top, there's roughly three stories of residency units on top of the, the one story of retail. Uh, this is about, so, this bay has about five thousand, forty-five hundred square feet of, uh, retail in it, and you can see the residential, the retail storefront, the, the neutral piers, the, the parapet above, and what have you. The units are set back about ten feet behind the facade. So the units are, there are residential units, wood frame units on top of this, this concrete, this is concrete structure, it's kind of a podium building, if you will. So you can see there's some landscaping in, in pots and some in the ground, but not a whole lot, this was viewed as, the idea was that they were going to have, you know, dining out in front and whatnot on the street and everything. Want to go on to the next one? Uh, so you can see the, the head-on elevation of that retail bay, which is Bay C. Uh, you can see the renovation, which is coming in and taking out the retail storefront and adding residential-type windows. Uh, some with transoms, some without, this all has transoms, again, the ceilings are pretty high here, this retail ceiling's probably around thirteen feet. So we're probably going to be somewhere around eleven feet in these units, anywhere from nine to eleven feet, they'd be pretty roomy units. They're pretty deep units, too, they're, this retail space is about forty-foot to thirty-foot, thirty-eight foot deep, so these are going to be roomy, big units, which is very desirable. Uh, I think especially across from a train station, uh, like I said, there's five, there's six one-story units and, and five two-story units. They're fairly roomy units. Uh, what we've done here, the idea was to create more of a residential feel, uh, for these spaces instead of the kind of the storefront feel, we've done that by kind of cutting down the, the windows to, you know, residential-sized windows, three-by-six with transoms. We've got solid wood doors, uh, in the, at the entries to create a front entry, we've put lights on either side of the entry doors where we, in almost every case. So we've kind of come to, come in and reduced the amount of glass, put more, put more of a residential feel, more solid walls. On the sides of these bays, we had some windows, we've taken those windows out, you don't see it on these elevations, but we've taken those windows out to give some of those units, the bed, the bedroom especially right there, the, some, the bed wall and more privacy. We put landscaping in front of this and, and to give these units some, some, some privacy, and to kind of say to people, you know, this is, these aren't retail bays, you can't just walk up and walk up and look in the windows. We, we pushed, we pushed landscaping out in front of most of these, these units to give them some privacy and to kind of make a statement, they're, they're, they need some, they are, you know, units. Uh, there are some grade differences than these, on this, on the, on the building. You can see from the top elevation, the grade kind of moved, uh, down from, from right to left, and there were three doors, so there are more doors now, and because of that, we've had to kind of create more stoops to get into the, into the bit units. So that's actually helped to create kind of more privacy, uh, for the units. Want to go on? Uh, this is just the black and white version. This should be the next retail bay, this is the next retail bay, Bay D, which is bigger, which is somewhere along seven thousand square feet or so. It had a little bit different feel with the colonnade, keep going. And you can see here the colonnade in front of the, in front of the, the retail facades, we've kept the colonnade, you'll see in the elevation, because that's part of the structure. But behind that, we've come in again and we've taken out all the retail storefront and put in residential-type windows, again, many with transoms, because we do have the extra height that you normally don't get in, in, in a residential type of, of units. And taken advantage of that, but again, every one of these units has a solid door, it has lights, it, it, it makes a statement that it's a residential unit. Again, we put in landscaping, uh, or in some cases, railings in front of the units to give them more privacy. So we think that's, we think that's going to be, uh, it's going to, it's going to work fairly, fairly well for these units. Want to keep going, there's a black and white version. Uh, these units are, we want to keep going, if there's a garage planned, let's see. One of the things that happened in the, in the original scheme, the garage, uh, was behind the building, if you remember from the very first, the garage is surrounded by the, the residential units, and people have to go out through the garage out, and we see the black arrow to the street to get to the, the retail bays. If they park in the garage, if they park in the street or walk in, that's different. Uh, and the people that are parking in these units also have to park back in the garage, the garage is overparked now. Uh, and, and, and the zoning changed and required less parking, so people will park back in the garage and they'll walk through this, through the, uh, I guess, a, a kind of a covered walkway to get out. So people will park back in the garage and they'll walk through this, through the, I guess, a kind of a covered walkway to get out to the street and come in through the, through the units. The units have, there's great changes between the units or the retail, actually existing retail and the, and the garage and the back of, the quarters back there. So there's really no way to get, you know, uh, handicap accessibility. People have to come out, walk out on the street and get into the front door of the units to get in.
And, and what this is showing is that the residential units do not require the amount of parking that the previously designed retail does. And so, we've fully negotiated a parking access easement so that those additional spaces are available for the city's use. And so, that garage, a portion of those parking spaces would be available to the public. That's the end of the presentation. With that, we're happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners.
Yeah, I have a question. It's more of a post-mortem-type question. When this was designed originally, it was for retail. And yet, there were no vent stacks for cooking. There was no column, I mean, there was electrical services, plumbing, H V A C that was never considered. So how would you expect to rent these units for retail?
So let me just answer that from a high level. We acquired the asset in two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
So it was designed prior to our involvement. So, um, Mark can speak to it a little bit. It was, it would not be our thought process today from an owner's perspective. The retail that we would design would accommodate more flexibility for uses. We would try to future-proof that space, so to speak. And so, it's a shame that it doesn't exist today, but from an original design perspective, Mark, I don't know.
I think, I think what Archstone was thinking was they were going to get places like, um, Quizno or someplace like that that didn't have cooking, uh, equipment other than just a panini kind of grill or.
There's no H V A C. There's no plumbing.
Well, there's, there's, uh, there's, there's H V A C and there's plumbing. I mean, they, they, they set it up for, uh, you know, retail stores like maybe nail salons and barber shops and, 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 eating establishments or food establishments that don't require, you know, a cooking, a cooking grill and overhead exhaust, stuff like that.
I, I think the staff comment is more about the cost to pull the H V A C to the unit itself, right? And so, it, it is, it permits for that. Clearly, there would be H V A C within each of the retail bays. But it's the fit-out cost to set that up for a tenant.
Well, let me ask a, a follow-up question then to staff. Is that something that we should consider in future development when they say mixed-use retail, that we should be looking for these things?
We certainly do. We, we definitely talked about it at three-fifteen. We also talked about it at this one, but it didn't happen.
Do we have any, any way of enforcing that or, you know, following up on that? Because that, that's a great concern. I mean, we've got these projects mixed-use, you know, we tout the, the zoning and so on and so forth. And yet, you know, we hear that, well, the, the market is not sustainable or, you know, now's not a good time to do this or it's been vacant for four or five years.
Well, that's why with, with, with three-fifteen, we've made sure there was back-of-house loading, which this does not have. And we asked that venting be required, but, you know, we still have to get a building permit on that one. So we're going to make sure that that, that was a condition as part of that.
I mean, with, with all due respect to the gentleman here, I mean, it's, it's clear to me and to anyone who designs retail spaces of any sort that the original design for this was designed by someone who clearly had little to no intention of any, of ever prioritizing retail use. From a loading perspective, from an M E P's perspective, from, I mean, it, it, it just wasn't. And the promise of mixed-use was lip service at best. So.
Right.
To you, sir, you're very lucky you aren't the original designer of this, because I'd be voting against this on principle.
Right.
We actually used this building, this specific building in our U L I, my, my U L I presentation on how not to design retail. This is actually a great example of exactly what not to do.
Sure.
And there's a great and large number of these by the previous owner that are out there in the world and messing us all up.
We'll, we'll take the loss for that.
Nobody underwrote eight years or six years of vacant space either. I understand that.
Sure. And, and we have a, a retail portfolio across the country of some two million square feet. It stays ninety to ninety-five percent occupied because the, um, the preparation to allow for various retail uses is thought through. This is one of the few spaces, unfortunately, that has sat vacant for as long as it has.
And I assure you that I threw a hissy fit with John's predecessor, um, you know, that it did not get built this way. Because it was clearly designed for residential, I just.
The five thousand or four thousand something that's left retail, what, how is that, how is that positioned?
Uh, so we're currently marketing that. We have an in-house marketing team and we also have a third-party broker that is engaged. I will say it's not something that we can disclose because the deal is not done. But the conversation with the retail tenants that have been interested in that remaining end space has been much more positive as we talk about the twelve thousand feet that would be converted to residential uses. They like the activation and we remain hopeful that we can fill that remaining space.
Okay. You were really only in elevation with the conversion of the residential units, the ground floor. I'm interested in a little bit more about how the new entrances to the new residential units are buffered from the street activity, if at all.
We have, we have a, I don't know if we have a site plan.
Yeah.
Did you, if you have a site plan from the civilian drawings?
Well, we're pulling that up. It's a fairly wide sidewalk to begin with.
The thing that's nagging at me a little bit is the more I see in-town redevelopment, residential on first-floor kind of busy street context, in more than a few cases, they end up with a more, more of a wall garden kind of, kind of quality that you pass to bring into front door. Real strong buffer separation. So I don't know if that's necessary here.
So if you can see, let me see if I can, oops, I'm sorry. I want, can I zoom in a little bit more on that?
You have to get out of full view.
You might want to just zoom in on that bay there. So here you can see Bay C. You can see the arrows are the five, the five doors. You can see we, the, the original sidewalk went all the way from, from here all to here without any real, you know, there are a few landscaping things here, existing planters. But it was pretty much envisioned, as you know, it would be streetscape with possible, you know, outdoor dining. So, and that, that was, that was why these lines were here. This was the outdoor dining zone and this was the sidewalk zone. So we've come in with, with planters, raised planters here. Let me see if I can do this. Raised planters here. Underneath the windows here, there's windows along in here and doors and doors and whatnot. Then we've had a couple of stoops here because we have to adjust to the grades. So we've got stoops here with, with stairs at the end. This is flat here. People can kind of roll in and get in, roll in and get in. Here are the stoops here. Then we put in-ground planters here and in-ground planters here to give some shielding to that. We need access in through here, so we really can't do much landscaping. But here we put in landscaping because our entry is here. We put in landscaping on both sides of this. Here's here and here and here. That's our entries of here. Now, if I can zoom out, let me.
The goal, however, was not to create that private garden experience for the residential users that you're talking about. That we sort of blended this pri- private-ish and public space so that, to Mark's point early in the presentation, it didn't feel as though it'd be appropriate to walk right up to that window and store, and old storefront. But at the same time, make sure that it felt residential. We wanted to make sure that we weren't forcing a residential use in sort of a retail application and visual. And we think that we've hopefully found the right balance. If there's commentary to that, we're happy to sort of continue to massage it with staff, but we did have a few rounds of.
Right now, all the, all the new entrances, all the new unit entrances are a straight shot from the street sidewalk. There's no gates, there's no walls, there's no.
That's correct.
And you could walk along that entire facade with the exception of the corner windows.
Well, no, well, you, you have, you can't walk along the entire facade because there's planters in your way. You have to kind of, there's, there's.
It's a little bit of a zigzag effort.
You're hitting, you're hitting the entries, the five or six entries, five, five in Bay C and six in Bay D, but there's planters along either side. So you kind of are forced away from the resi, you're forced away from the bedroom windows. And you can get to the front door.
But there are no gates or fences that would prevent you from wanting to walk on.
Are they like little brick knee-walls or something like that?
There are brick knee-walls at the ends. You see where they're, here's a brick knee-wall. Here there's a brick knee-wall. Here there's a brick knee-wall.
We can't see it yet.
Here there's a brick knee-wall. In other places like here, they're just in-ground planters, in-ground planters, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Flush with the existing.
Flush with the ground, yeah, right.
Well, they do have to, you do have to put a step in, in to get into the unit, correct?
Uh, in some of the units, we have to have steps, yes. In, in Bay C, we're having, uh, we're having steps. We're, we're actually taking advantage of the fact that the grade is sloping across. And on the right-hand side of the unit, we're at grade. You kind of come in and you turn and you're at grade and you go down and you're flat. And then at the end, you have, you can step down one or two steps. On Bay, on Bay D, in here, if you can see this, we're coming in here and you're going down this way behind this colonnade to get in. Because again, we're kind of, you know, working the, we're working through the existing grades a little bit. All of these entries have to work through the existing grades. We're, we're kind of one of the things we're forcing here.
There are some, there are some railings behind some of those in-ground planters. There's some, there's some other elements in there, but it's not, not rolled off and you can't walk along.
Right, but there's no opportunity for like porches and like benches outside.
Well, you get a little bit of that on Bay D because the, the colonnade is about three feet out. It's, it's kind of a porch in essence. And gives you some cover along the whole way there. You know, um, there are no porches on Bay C, you know, we, we, we don't feel that, you know, building, more building would be appropriate.
Right.
You know, so.
The intention was that it felt like you were walking by maybe a townhome, a stick of townhomes. So that that, the space in front of the residences did not feel completely private to the residences themselves. But residents felt appropriate, like there was this threshold where they sort of left the public sidewalk and walked into something that felt a little more comfortable, like they were walking to their front door. And we did that through the use of some raised planters, some at-grade planters and sort of varying the locations of those.
Okay. All right. Where are we on the presentation? Are you done or?
We're done.
Okay.
Trying to make the best of a bad situation.
Other questions? I don't think anybody's left here in the audience to comment or testify. See, Mr. Klein's sitting here. I think you're, you're working tonight. You're not testifying. All right. Anything over there? Okay. Recommendation, Chris, please?
Staff recommends the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant A F P eighty-four-six twenty-eighteen amendment to final site plan, Gaithersburg Station Apartments, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one-seventy and twenty-four dash one-seventy-two A of the city code.
Thank you. I just have one question. So these are, these are just rental units and not for sale, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, just to be clear.
Okay.
Unless she wanted to buy one.
Put, make it a retail space. Bad decisions aside, early in the process that, that led to this, this need right now, I think it's, it seems to be a reasonable way to activate the, the facade. And, and the only reservation I had was the right balance between the, the access to the door, easy access and welcoming access to the door and, and appropriate separation from the public realm. This is depending on where you are in the world, you see more or less of that, you know, given the, whatever the circumstances are. And I, I guess I will trust right now is that as, um, you operate and, and manage enough of these to know what, what the market wants and what people expect, that, that you're building to fit that, that need and demand and it's the right amount of kind of tempering between the public and private area, I assume. And that's, that's what I'll have to take on right now. I don't know that we have any in-the-city examples that, that point any other way, except much farther afield when, you know, traveling to other cities and other, other towns that do, do things a little differently. But that, that could be for totally different reasons and entirely different, different, different circumstances, so.
Yeah, some in Hidden Creek, right? And then we have, our townhouses are, often have the little, you know, six-foot, eight-foot front yards that.
Yeah, I'm struggling to find examples of where the townhouses are right on the public realm. And where they have been developed, there's been a little bit of, little bit of friction between what goes on on a public street and what goes on on somebody's front stoop. So I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that in a couple of areas.
Yeah, what I, what I can't think of is one that sits on such a large sidewalk, right? There's quite a few that sit on a five-foot sidewalk with a buffer, but there are many that sit on a.
Anybody have any insights on that at all, but?
I mean, my, my take on it is it's very well-designed. It's nice and simple, in-ground planters, uh, the brick and stuff pushed off to the corners, you know, inset to the architecture. And then, uh, you know, they dealt with the grade by, you know, by letting the stairs deal with the slope behind the planter. And it's, it's all, it's great. I think it's really well-done. You know, frankly, I wish we, you know, got into this a little earlier. You're right, there's, it's inevitable. It was inevitable when the initial plan was submitted, but, um, I'm glad we finally got here and I think this is right. And, you know, frankly, big picture, too, is, you know, these are.
It's like across the street, too.
Yeah, right. And, you know, from Hidden Creeks, you know, we, we do sort of arguing in there to get the podium in, even if we think it's going to be retail for the next twenty years. There's another twenty years after that where the building's not going to need substantial changes. And being able to put infill of small neighborhood goods and services in that first floors, I mean, we can't even do that anymore because we brought the stick down. Here, here should, you know, twenty years from now, this turn into something that, you know, really wants to be awkwardly shaped retail, because who knows what's going to happen to retail in twenty years, right? Some kind of other commercial use that only needs to be thirty feet deep and only needs a fourteen-foot ceiling and all these things that, you know, regular retail today doesn't want. But, yeah, we're able from a code standpoint, from a basic safety standpoint, to actually retrofit that with something else that's leased. So even though today we're switching from a commercial lease to a residential lease, twenty years, we can switch from a residential lease to a commercial lease.
Still there, it should happen, yeah.
Right. The infrastructure is there.
Yep.
Except for all the infrastructure that retail actually needs.
Any other, any other concerns, questions?
That's there.
Best sol- best solution to a bad situation?
Yeah, best of a bad situation.
Okay, uh, is there a motion, please, then?
Mr. Chair, I move that, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report's findings and recommendation and our discussion this evening, grant A F P eight-zero-four-six dash two-zero-eighteen amendment to final plan on Gaithersburg Station Apartments, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one-seventy and twenty-four dash one-seventy-two A of the city code with zero conditions.
Second. It's moved to the second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passed unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Look forward to seeing the, the new, the new grand opening. And the retail space.
And the retail, please, yeah.
All right. All right, that takes us to our annual election of officers. And I think in confirming with staff, we have enough here to, to go ahead and move forward with that.
Okay.
So I will ask for nominations for Chairman, please.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate John Bauer as chairman of the planning commission for the next year.
Second? I, I will accept that nomination. Any other?
Did you have a choice?
I'm flattered.
Flattered, threatened, flattered.
Any other nominations? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will abstain. Any opposed? Phil, you can oppose, you know. All right, thanks very much. I appreciate the, the confidence in, in continuing in that position. And next nominations, please, for Vice Chair. Where are we on that?
Uh, are we doing it in rotation?
Yes.
I think it's your turn. It's me turn.
Mr. Chair, I move that we nominate Mr. Hopkins for second year.
Very good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other nominations? All right, all in favor of the nomination, please say aye.
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 I'll abstain, I guess.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You are our Vice Chair.
Good luck. Be chair next week.
Next meeting.
He's not going to be here.
That's why we shouldn't have put that site.
Oh, I see.
Very good. Uh, next up is from the commission. Phil, may I start with you?
Uh, you may. I don't have any.
But you don't have any, okay. You've done enough already. Danny, anything?
I have some, I need to defer until next meeting. I have stuff, but I need to defer.
That's such a tease.
Just, I need to, I need to offer up some.
You have some slides.
No drone footage.
Hey, you gave me an idea.
Oh, okay.
Just make sure you have that F A.
I'd like to congratulate the new chair and the Vice Chair on their election. And, uh, again, as you said, Happy New Year and Happy Holidays to everybody. And I hope two thousand nineteen is as productive as we were in two thousand eighteen, because we really did a lot of work here. The staff did a tremendous job.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, they ought to be commended for a remarkable year this past year, or past all years, really, for the last ten years. Okay, thanks.
Nothing for me.
Okay.
Second Lloyd's sentiment.
Excellent. Trudy, Greg, want to jump in?
Well, with a new year, we have a new planning commission calendar.
Yes.
Um, so you all received that, I believe, the other day.
Yep.
So any questions about it? We're available, let us know.
Okay. The, the, um, lead times on submittals, that all stayed consistent with the past year, right? We didn't have any changes in that?
Yeah, our submittal deadlines are typically the first, like Wednesday of the month, if I remember correctly, I've done my.
But it hasn't changed, so.
No.
What, what hasn't been, um, done, which we, we didn't do last year, but is that we're not saying that if you submit it, you will get it on this agenda, because we're finding that the plans are underwhelming.
Oh, oh, just to get it on the, get it on the agenda and then, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And we're not, we're saying you can submit it at this time, but we're not saying when it will be.
Okay.
Available. But they all know when the meetings are and they certainly ask us.
Excellent. All right, what else we got? Anything else?
Just a reminder that our, with a new calendar, our next planning commission meeting is, uh, January sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. And at your end, anything?
Nothing for me.
Trudy, Frank?
Happy to you.
Chris, thanks for sticking around. You want to make a big announcement or anything?